At 6:00 PM, if you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. This is the Union Township Board of Trustees meeting of March 8th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Let the record show that all three trustees are present. Mr. Campbell. First item, gentlemen, roll call for all three trustees.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
All three trustees are present.
All right, approval of minutes, gentlemen. We're being asked to approve four meeting minutes tonight. Start with February 8th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
No discussion, gentlemen. Mr. Campbell, call the roll.
Roll call. Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, February 21st, 2022, special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve, gentlemen?
So moved?
Second.
No discussion, gentlemen. Mr. Campbell, call the roll.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number three, gentlemen, February 22nd, 2022, special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
No discussion, gentlemen. Mr. Campbell, call the roll.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number four, February 25th, 2022, special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
So moved?
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell, call the roll.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving down to correspondence. Mr. Campbell, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do, sir. Two. They're both liquor permits. The first one is a new permit, Taz, T-A-Z, Fresh Westchester LLC, doing businesses. Teziki's, T-A-Z-I-K-I-S, Mediterranean Cafe, 450 Ohio Pike, Unit 22, and Union Township in State of Ohio, 452-55. Have a letter from a police chief saying that everything is okay. They have no objections. And Mr. Wright has assured me that it is zoned appropriately. Second, we have another liquor permit, and it also is new. And this one's for Batavia Sea Store Incorporated, doing businesses, grab and go, 1158 State Route 74, Union Township, Batavia, Ohio, 45103. Again, the chief has no objections from the police department, and Mr. Wright has sent the accompanying zoning. That concludes the minutes. Are my correspondence.
All right, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Before I jump down to our proclamations and special presentations, I do want to recognize, I see when I look out through the crowd here, we've got Commissioner Painter joining us this evening. So welcome, Commissioner Painter. I've got a Commissioner Bachelor, welcome Commissioner Bachelor. And do I have any other elected officials hiding in the crowd? I want to recognize. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. And I also see my wife, and we're about three, four weeks out from a new baby. So thank you all for joining us on a date night out, because this is about the first time we can get out in public together. So thank you all for being here. All right. Let me move on. Proclamations and special presentations. So, got Resolution 2022-17 here, gentlemen. And I'm gonna read it in full and request a motion for it. This is a resolution honoring Corey William Wright for his service as interim township administrator, assistant administrator, director of zoning and planning, and executive director of the Community Investment Corporation for Union Township, Claremont County, Ohio. It's applause just right there. Probably just the first round of applause there, too. So, here it goes. Whereas the Union Township Board of Trustees desires to acknowledge and recognize the positive efforts of Corey Wright for his service as interim township administrator, assistant township administrator, director of zoning and planning, and executive director of the Community Investment Corporation for Union Township, Claremont County in the state of Ohio. And whereas, Mr. Wright has provided exceptional leadership and has been guided and has guided Union Township through 16 years of continued sustained positive growth, having the distinction of leading one of the first communities in Claremont County with property valuations exceeding $1 billion, providing growing public services to a growing population of nearly 50,000 residents in 2021, and providing outstanding financial oversight and direction that has resulted in the establishment of a stable financial reserve to ensure continuity of operations and services in Union Township. And whereas, Mr. Wright, as the assistant administrator, has the distinction of leading the only township with fully accredited law enforcement, 911 emergency communications operations, fire and emergency medical service, and public works department. And whereas, Mr. Wright has been instrumental in the development and execution of regionally significant transformative economic development projects in Union Township, specifically the development of Ivy Point Commerce Park, the placement, development, and expansion of Total Quality Logistics, AP Technology, the West Claremont High School Consolidation Project, Jungle Gyms East Gate, the expansion and relocation of Hamilton Safe, and the transformation of the East Gate South retail area, and other countless economic development projects that have benefited the lives of residents in Union Township, Claremont County, and Southwest Ohio. And whereas, this board would like to personally and publicly recognize and thank Mr. Wright for his 16 years of service and dedication to Union Township, because we believe that he has excelled in all of his positions and has been instrumental in building upon Union Township's reputation as a premier destination within greater Cincinnati metropolitan area. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Union Township, Claremont County, Ohio, that March 11th, 2022, be declared Corey William Wright Day in Union Township. Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
So moved?
Second.
Gentlemen, open the floor for discussion.
Yeah, I'll start. Mr. Wright, you and I have become very, very close, and I appreciate you so much. I hope you know that. And we're not, we're not losing an employee. We're losing a family member with Union Township. And you, you're important. You're important. What you do, what you did, here in Union Township, it matters, Mr. Wright. And it's difficult to call him Mr. Wright, because I call him Corey all the time. But, you know, I know, I know you and Mr. Campbell started together right around the same time. I know that Mr. Taylor got promoted and was here right around the same time as you as well. And I'll tell you, you gotta follow your dreams. And I can't fault you for doing that at all, because, you know, you staying here wasn't, or you leaving wasn't a money issue or any kind of concern like that. It was simply you needed to get the city and zoning experience from city law. And I can't blame you at all for following your dream. But I want you to know, Mr. Wright, now, I'll go on record right now. If you, if you ever wanted to come back as me as a trustee here in any way, if there's an opening anywhere, even if it's cutting grass, you can always come back. And I just, you're gonna be missed. You're gonna be missed, Corey. And I love you, buddy. And I'm sorry that you're leaving, but Loveland, Loveland got themselves a gym. And so, appreciate you very much, buddy.
Thank you.
Mr. Regey, my turn.
Go ahead. So, yeah, Mr. Wright and I, I guess, first became acquainted, I don't know, 15 years ago, maybe, when I was building a garage. So it was just official business and learning zoning. And he's helping me jump through the hoops with the, with the county and with the Union Township. There were a lot of hoops to jump through. Got it all done successfully. And so he and I didn't, you know, all that went well. He and I didn't have much contact after that. And then until I'm running for this position. And then I'm starting to watch the online, the zoning commission meetings. And I'm watching, and I'm listening to Mr. Wright. And I'm thinking, I like this guy. This guy's sharp. This guy knows what he's talking about. And so I was just very impressed with him. And then, you know, and then, of course, you know, before we came on board here the first of the year, Mr. Geis announced his resignation. And so, and Mr. Wright was named the interim administrator, you know, which was fine. But really hadn't worked with him, didn't know much about him. Well, I tell you this, speaking for myself, and I don't think any of my colleagues are gonna disagree, you know, I was very, very impressed. And I mean, the way he takes control, I think he's working 70 hours a week or running the poor guy ragged. And before we had a chance to make it official, to bump him up to make him administrator, have him backfill his current position, then he winds up getting an offer that he just couldn't turn down to go to the city of Loveland. So, you know, their gain is certainly our loss. And, you know, again, just, I can't say enough good things about him. Ditto to everything Mr. Dills said. And Mr. Wright, you know, I wish you well. And if there's anything I can ever do for you, give me a call. Be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. I'll absolutely, you know, second both of what you've just stated there. It's been really great working with you, Corey, and the time that we've been here, and frankly, the time that we've been able to closely work together in the last two to three, even four months. And it didn't take me long to realize and recognize your passion and where you want to go. And I see this all over the place for, you know, your next steps. And that's, you know, a city manager and city planning type position. And hopefully, as time will tell, maybe down in a little town, South Carolina, one day when you're, when you're much older, and can, can enjoy that. Because there's been specific communities or two that he's pointed out to me, and he just really likes their planning and the way that they're designed. And, you know, that's, that's a dream, right? You gotta, you gotta pursue that. And I will, you know, it sounds like this board too, but I will do anything in my power to always help push you forward and, and help, help you exceed all your goals and your dreams and expectations that you want to go. And, you know, I think that's, that's the best thing, to be part of a team like that, where, you know, you do have change, but you got each other's backs to support people, and you want them to move forward, and you want them to do, you know, what's best for them at the same rate, what's best for, for the community. So there's a way to do it both. And you have professionally dedicated your time and experience to that. And Mr. Becker's right, it's been hours upon hours. I don't know how many frequent phone calls you get from myself or one of the other board members saying, it's 5 o'clock on Friday, Corey, are you home yet? Get home, you know. And at 7:30, I get the message back, just left the office, sir. It's like, I want you home with your family as well. So with that, Corey, just thank you. Thank you for everything. And gentlemen, I will do this one maybe out of rotation for, well, I'll hold tight, Corey, on going down. I'd like to present this with you down front. And I know you, you don't care for the camera, but we're gonna make you do it. So, but we'll, we'll do that. So everyone, who would for Corey, just. So currently, we've got, that's, gentlemen, I think that closes out our discussion on the resolution. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-17.
So moved?
Second. Roll call. Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Corey.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for that. All right, as we move on here, go right back to Corey on one thing. Corey, you saw, you know, the board's vision and took great initiative to implement what we're gonna talk about next here, be an employee appreciation program. You just jumped right on it without delay. Now, I don't know if either of the board members want to add a comment to that, because this is, this is something brand new. This is something that, in the total existence of Union Township, there's not been what we're about to do. So it's, you know, it's just great change.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. And so, I like to consider myself accessible. And so, I had many of the employees in Union Township reach out, and I was enjoying talking to them and telling, you know, telling me about the insights of the township and what they do. And one thing that I heard somewhat often was, the employees felt like a number. And they, they showed up and they felt like they just got a paycheck. Some of them, not all of them. But it not really bothered me. And so, and coincidence, back in January, two months ago, my wife got an award from her company that she works with. And it was a five-year award. It was a little pyramid glass, you know, etched, etched on it and said, you know, thanks for all your service. And for that period, you know, she was tickled to death. She felt like a million bucks. And so, I took a picture of it. I sent it to Mr. Wright, and I said, hey, do we do anything like this in Union Township for our employees, you know, that have been here for however long? And he says, it doesn't exist. And I'm like, gosh, that's a shame. So, so we put an employee program in place. And thank you, Mr. Wright, for spearheading that for me and for us. And, and the cool part about this is, so every five years, it'll be every, you know, five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years of an employee's service with Union Township, we're gonna recognize them. We're gonna have them bring their family out and recognize them with the board, and let them know that we love them. We appreciate them. We value them. We don't want them to go anywhere. We want them to stay right here and let them know that we just appreciate many, many years of service. Because that's rare. That's rare today. You know, people jump ship, and we want people to know that work here in Union Township, that we appreciate them. And so, the neat part about it is, it's set on a calendar. So, so if an employee comes up on that five-year mark, benchmark, the award is automatically mailed to us, and we notify them and their family to come out to the next board meeting, and we'll recognize them. And so hypothetically, if we're gone, if the next board comes in, it cannot be reversed unless they physically reverse it and change it. And so it's kind of set in stone. So I'm excited about it. And, yeah, so, it's all good. That's, that's the backstory behind it.
Gentlemen, at this time, want to recognize our Union Township Years of Service program for February, March, 2022. Melissa Kiskaden, Union Township Communications, 15 years of service, and that will be marked on March 14th of 2022. Please stand up, Melissa. Yes, yeah, yeah. And then the following. Nicholas Howard, Union Township Post Office, five years of service, will be celebrated on March 29th of 2022. And John Rose, Union Township Fire Department, five years of service, was celebrated on February 13th of 2022. So, that's great. Just, thank you. Nicholas, come around and come on up, and we'll grab a quick picture with you as well. It's a little black, this is the very first time. Absolutely appreciate it. We'll pull this aside, and we'll get a picture real quick. All right. I'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak tonight, public comments?
Phil Thomas, 83, Oregon, Wyoming. Gentlemen, I come tonight to talk to you about a resolution that's gonna be presented to you here in a few moments by a recognizable figure here, the community. Last night, we have what's called a Central Committee in Union Township. The Central Committee, Committee in Union Township is comprised of Republicans that are supposed to be conservative-minded, and we're supposed to link up with our GOP at the county. What's gonna happen is, these select few folks have banded together to create a resolution admonishing all of you for your work in appointing the new township administrator. I have checked into it with several other townships, and nothing that you guys have done here is out of sorts. Everything going into executive session, when you're hiring a new administrator that has not turned in their previous notice to where they're at, it puts them at risk if they're applying elsewhere, you know, that they could, you know, lose their job. So this is all confidential information and going into executive session. And it's, the precedence has been set in many other townships. So I'm here to tell you that our leadership of Claremont County GOP are not aligned with what you're about to be presented. So it's going to be presented from a GOP organization, but it is not heard from our Claremont County leadership, from the GOP. And I think all of you have done, in the couple of months that you've been here, an outstanding job trying to pick up a very difficult situation where you had an administrator leave without notice and without a transition plan, which is very unprofessional, and you're, you know, Corey having his offer and having to go. So it's put the township in a very risky position, and you had to jump on this and hire someone. So with that being said, I also looked into the situation of Mr. Geis and what was paid out to him. And I am very disturbed that the township paid out $68,000 to Mr. Geis in severance pay. Mr. Geis left on his own accord. So I dug into it a little deeper to find that Mr. Geis's contract was written by himself, and he does not have any limit on vacation days. So you're gonna tell me in 12 years that he's accumulated $68,000 in PTO that had to be paid out to him? So I would like the trustees to address that tonight publicly and, and put the facts on the record as to why we shelled out $68,000 to a guy that quit without, without notice, and how in the world a contract was ever written for a township administrator to not have caps on their vacation days? We have a legal authority, I thought, what's his name, Barbier or whoever, who I believe Ken Geis's daughter works for. And there's all these ties, and I've gone through this in previous meetings, and I won't repeat it, of his son-in-law doing business with CUC and all these ties. But I do want answers from this board tonight as to why we're shelling out that money, why there were no caps, and in the new contract, are we going to ensure that this doesn't happen again? Because we're paying somebody 68. I know when you quit a job, you don't get paid severance typically. I mean, if you just upright and quit and don't transition, that's unbelievable. So I am disturbed about that. But on, on another note, I do appreciate all the work you guys have done to try to recover from this mess that we were left with. And this resolution is a disgusting display of just vengeance, politics, sour grapes of previous trustees banding with an individual and trying to make you guys look bad. And the public needs to see through this nonsense and ignore what they're about to hear. Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, anyone else like to speak this evening?
Thank you for keeping your comments brief, Mr. Thomas.
It's unusual, isn't it? Hi, I'm Chris Hex. I live at 444 Woodward Court, Cincinnati, Ohio. And I'm the villain. I'm the demon. Everybody look at me. I'm gonna have, I have a prepared remarks. I have a couple copies, if anybody wants them. I'm gonna read them very quickly. Last night, on March 7th, the Union Township Central Committee met, the UTRCC. The UTRCC is a body comprised of the Claremont County Republican Party precinct executives who cover the precincts in Union Township. I am the chair and serve as the township executive in the Claremont County Republican Executive Committee. All the Union Township government elected officials are members of the UTRCC. The UTRCC meets on the first Monday of each month. Anybody's welcome. It has done so for years and years. It has been a point of pride for many members of our township, of members that our township Republican Party meets regularly. Last night, after long discussion and editing, the UTRCC passed the resolution I am about to read. I don't want to disappoint. Union Township Republican Central Committee Resolution, Township Administrator Selection Process, Monday, March 7th, 2022. Whereas government transparency, open and public deliberation, and citizen engagement is important, in important decisions, is invaluable. Whereas a selection process is taking place in Union Township for a new township administrator, whereas the selection process to date has lacked public transparency and citizen engagement, therefore be it resolved that the UTRCC calls on the Union Township trustees to share finalist information and allow the community to review and provide comment back to the trustees before an administrator hiring is finalized. Be it further resolved that the UTRCC calls on the Union Township trustees to host an open, public session for public input prior to finalizing the hiring of an administrator. I voted for it, as did all but a few committee members in attendance. I think it is simple, factual, moral, and ethical. I was glad last night that several people provided edits to make and keep it simple, factual, moral, and ethical. Demonizing me or any member of the UTRCC does not change that what I just read is simple, factual, moral, and ethical. The committee wants to see you and our township succeed. They want to see in action what they have heard from you in meetings about transparency, openness, engagement, inclusion, and engaging the community. And I don't appreciate And I don't appreciate the smirk, Mr. Logue. Those are my remarks. I hope that you will hear the community that I believe elected you guys impart on promises of great transparency, openness, and citizen inclusion. In fact, you criticized prior regimes that they didn't have enough open meeting sessions for input, you criticized them for having too many executive sessions and doing things behind closed doors. The administrator selection is not just important for some members of our community or a region of our community, it is important for the entire community, and it deserves to be treated in a better way. I'm going off my script because I just want to mention one thing. Some of you might have read in the paper, University of Cincinnati was considering, is considering a new police chief. What did they do? They put all the three finalist information online. They had public sessions with each one of them. They had a survey for people who attended the sessions to provide input back to the people making the decision. The same thing happened with Cincinnati Public Schools, the same thing happened in the city of Fairfield. Why isn't it happening here? I thank you for hearing my remarks. I hope you will take into consideration your own campaign promises for openness, transparency, and citizen engagement in important decisions with this community. Thank you.
All right, thank you for concluding your remarks, and gentlemen, I'm just, I'm trying to keep track of this as we go here. We had six-eighteen to six-twenty-two with Mr. Thomas, and we've got five minutes on the last remarks, so that's a good range, four to five minutes. Is there anyone else that, is there anyone else that is interested to speak this evening? Please approach, and name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Rob Wing, forty-seven, seventy-three Rumpke Road. I'm a resident and business owner in Union Township for more than thirty years. First, I'd like to welcome Susan Cohen Ayers, and I look forward to being hired as our next administrator of Union Township. Next, just a quick bit of information. I became involved in Union Township politics in 2014 when the then-trustees aligned with the developer to work around a year-two-thousand federal decree on two-hundred-and-seventy-one acres on Rumpke Road that they named Miller Place. The federal decree calls for a maximum of five-hundred-and-seventy-five single-family homes on the two-hundred-and-seventy-one acre property. When the former trustees passed a resolution in 2018 allowing the developer to build fourteen-hundred-and-forty-five units, almost three times the number of single-family homes agreed to in the federal decree, seventy-eight percent of which were multifamily, and almost nine-hundred of which were to be rental apartments, myself and others from our neighborhood rallied together to challenge it. We aligned over four-thousand Union Township registered voters demanding a referendum and change. Though the township denied the referendum, we eventually got our wins in court, and we worked to help change the administration of Union Township to prevent anything like that from happening again. From trustees to administrator to law director, we have a new team in Union Township, which is focused on a better future for the township and its residents. Good things are already happening. We're now experiencing trustee meetings that are highly transparent and informative. In fact, I've told several people that I feel like I've learned more about how the township is managed just in the past January and February meetings than in the previous seven-plus years of meetings that I've regularly attended. The trustees are working to create committees to involve the public, such as the new Parks and Recreation Committee. And just recently, the new administration announced another expansion of TQL in Union Township, adding another one-thousand jobs. I'm excited and proud to be a resident of this township, and I thank the entire Union Township staff, from trustees to part-time maintenance workers, for their efforts to continue to make Union Township a great place to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wing. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Mr. Millman? Name and address, please, for the record, thank you.
I'm Chris Millman. My work address, but I live there most of the time, one-on-one East Main Street, Latoya, Ohio. I hope I can spend a little, be brief and spend a little positivity on this. First of all, thank you, Corey, for all of your service. Corey and I have worked a lot over the years. A great thing for me is I'll still be able to work with Corey when it goes to Lovren because we still have that relationship on that western side of Claremont County. Also, wanted to congratulate the soon-to-be administrator, Ms. Ayers, and the firefighters that are going to be taking on new positions. It's a great endeavor for them, for Union Township, and also for, you know, Claremont County community, so I want to congratulate them. Also, just wanted to, just wanted to say briefly, you know, we have worked with the township over the years. I've been with the county for twenty-five years, and just most recently, in the last couple of years, with Michael, dealing with, you know, sales data, valuation data for the township, trying to do things right. You know, we're looking forward to, we're looking forward to what's in the future, working with the new administration, new trustees, you know, the aspect of new technologies that we can help bring to the table for you with new types of mapping, data, and also some of the imagery that we can bring now that's up to date. So, just want to, again, congratulate everyone, and then also looking forward to what we can do here in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millman. Anyone else like to speak this evening? And if I did see, I was looking through the crowd, I missed earlier, Commissioner Corcoran has joined us as well, so welcome, Commissioner Corcoran. Anyone else, before I close, public comment this evening? All right, with that, close public comment. We'll move on to personnel actions. So, with personnel actions, let's see here, I've got a few notes, gentlemen, I want to get started into. And if you did have any reserve comments, we can hold those till the board comments at the end. So, if you made any notes there as far as a couple of things that were stated. All right, so, we have heard, I mean, tonight, we have heard just optimistic and positive messages from community leaders supporting this board and in support of this candidate. You know, but I personally, I've heard echoes of the same from several business owners, a few sentiments that I'd like to share. Dan Rolfes, who's the chairman of Center Bank, he said, "Congratulations to the board. It is vital to not let that position sit vacant, and to have had such competition in this market is a compliment to the board and township. Good luck, Susan." And Rick Welker, RJ Cinemas and Distillery and Ambassador with the Chamber of Commerce, said, "This is great news to hear and looking forward to meeting Susan. Great work by the board." There is more echoes behind that, but those are two that stood out, two individuals that are always very engaged in the community, and they're out there doing great work. So, again, the time that I actually have opportunity to speak to both of you, it's just great to be able to share that type of stuff with you as well. So, look, I'm proud of the board's competitive and open process. We had over twelve applications, nearly fifteen hours interviewing, considering candidates. You heard us approve the special meeting minutes earlier in the evening, all of those publicly noticed. You know, all of our meetings were properly noticed, applications were available to the public, and all of us were available for feedback. Our process mirrors what local governments around the state do when hiring a top-level official. And with some research, gentlemen, I just have to share this, a stark difference from the last time an administrator was hired in the township, like, I came across this article detailing the process, this is from 2010. And I know you're always keen on double-dipping, so you could probably enlighten me on this, but, "Because of state laws concerning rehiring retired employees, Geis cannot start with the township until March twenty-ninth." I'll skip ahead. While most of the people spoke were in support of Geis, others were concerned about the process. The trustees did not advertise the vacant position or interview any candidates other than Geis. Several residents had comments. Here's one, "We have an opportunity to look for a qualified administrator for Union Township. We need to advertise the position and pick the best qualified. If Geis is the best qualified, fine, but you need to advertise and make it fair." Another former trustee candidate, John McGraw, also was unhappy that Geis was the only person interviewed for the job. He said, "Bringing Geis in without the proper application and interview process looks shady." End quote. "Union Township had been moving toward, forward towards openness," and this just puts a lid on that again. "I think this does a great disservice. You're bringing him in under a black cloud. It's going to be hard for him to erase that," McGraw said. Those are just some highlights from this article that I had found, old newspaper article. And it does actually indicate administrator salary. I'm not going to go off on the side note of that because there was a question posed to us earlier, which I don't know if there's accurate information completely there, but, but yeah, gentlemen, I just thought that was stark contrast. So, with that, proud tonight to present our candidate for township administrator, Ms. Susan Cohen Ayers. She was born and raised in Cincinnati area following graduation from Turpin High School. Susan moved to Columbus, Ohio, obtained a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration with a focus in finance and international business from the Ohio State University. Susan then accepted a position as financial analyst for the NCR Corporation in Dayton, Ohio. In order to further her education, Susan went back to school and obtained a Juris Doctorate from Case Western Reserve University School of Law. From what I hear, it's a very prestigious and difficult school to make acceptance to, so. In 2013, no, I'm sorry, in 2007, she returned to the Cincinnati area to start her legal career with Hamilton County Public Defender and the Clinton County Prosecutor's Offices. In 2013, Susan accepted a position with the City of Middletown, Ohio Law Department. From 2013 through 2022, Susan worked diligently for the City of Middletown as a prosecuting attorney, assistant law director, general counsel, director, acting city manager, and assistant city manager. I think she's got a few things in common with Mr. Corey Wright. These experiences are rooted in the desire for making sure her local community is safe and thriving. When not working, Susan resides with her husband Jonathan and their rescue dog, Oliver. You will often find Susan spending free time doting over nieces and nephews, rooting for the Buckeyes or the Bengals in the fall, and enjoying all the local theater, museums, and festivals that Cincinnati has to offer. You know, during this interview process, Susan was just extremely impressive with great judgment, attitude, servant leadership mindset. I mean, we pressed hard on all of our candidates, and that's a great position to be in where you've got extremely well-qualified candidates, and it's making the right fit and determination for this township for what's needed now. And, you know, I know Susan will face challenges, but we have full faith in her skills, I have full faith in her skills and background to represent our community with pride and dignity. And, you know, the community made their voice known loud and clear that they want to change in the last two election cycles, and we believe Susan will execute our vision for that change. So, gentlemen, that's the topic that I present to you tonight with Resolution 202022-16, Resolution Appointing Township Administrator, Approving the Employment Contract with Susan Cohen Ayers and Declaring It As an Emergency. You declare it as an emergency because with a unanimous vote on that, it can take effect within thirty days. So, gentlemen, to adopt Resolution 2022-16, I am looking for a motion on that at this time, and then we can go to discussion.
So, move.
Second.
And, gentlemen, discussion, I introduced it, so I'll let you have the floor here if you have anything additional to add there.
Ms. Ayers, Susan, you did a very good job in your interview process, and I felt like your personality will fit right in here. Your legal background, we like that a lot, and also, you know, the fact that you had a chest-out, chin-up confidence to you, I like that. And so, but you've done a lot of really good works as the, working for Middletown, and so, for me, it was, out of all the candidates, I thought you did a great job, and it was a no-brainer. I feel like you're from the east side of town, you're familiar with Claremont County, and tackling a project, you know, we, everyone knows that the big one is East Gate Mall, and there is no doubt you're going to tackle that one and get a deal done. I feel very confident with that, with you, and you've got big shoes to fill with Mr. Wright, and, but there's no doubt, I think you will, and I know you will. So, I can't speak for them, but I think I can. Fully have my support, I'm looking forward to working with you, and you're going to do a great job, so.
So, you know, when, you know, I looked over at a list of candidates, the resumes and their applications, looked through it all, there was one of the dozen that we had that in my mind was a standout, and she also was a standout interviewing, twice. You know, going into this, you know, I'm the cheapest gate of the group up here, I'm always looking to keep costs to a minimum. We could have hired somebody for a whole lot less money, but it comes down to not necessarily less money, or who's the cheapest, but what's the best value? Who can we get the best bang for the buck with? And, you know, I think we've made a good choice here with getting the best value. So, you know, so what am I thinking when I'm talking about best value? I made a list of the number of jobs she's going to be filling. I got eleven of them here. She's going to be the administrator, she's going to be the assistant administrator, she's going to be administrative assistant, she's going to be the zoning director, she's going to be the human resources director, she's going to be the information technologies director, the information systems director, the finance director, the public relations director, the legal consultant, and the public records request gopher, which is a bigger job than all of them put together, unfortunately. So, Ms. Ayers has my full confidence and support.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, both, on that, and you've heard me speak enough on that, but yes, I mean, wow, just her resume stands out, you know, everything from prosecuting a thousand cases a month to then being that general counsel and law director and being the records, you know, specialist for teaching about sunshine laws and everything else as that expert, expertise, and as you recognize, I mean, we'll mention that, I think, later in the administrator's report, but, you know, fortunately, that's one of the natures of the environment and government right now, which is fine, but that is actually, you know, that is something that fits that mold. So, with that, with that, gentlemen, and, you know, Joe, as he said, the mall, I mean, City of Middletown right now is redeveloping their mall, I mean, what recent and relevant experience can you get in that? So, you know, she's been, if you've seen anything or heard anything, I know you called on all the references, but, I mean, it's, you know, there's not, there's not a dull word to be said. I mean, I think I see your family with you tonight, Susan, they must be extremely proud of you, just, you know, we're proud of you, and I, you know, I've only known you for a couple of weeks, so I am sure that they are. At this time, gentlemen, entertain a motion to, if you have something additional to add?
Ready for roll call.
Ready for roll call, I'm sorry, motions are made. Yes, we'll close discussion and roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome, Susan.
All right, we'll keep moving along. At this time, Chief Daimling, you have some fire department hires to present with us for this evening.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Logue. First of all, this evening, I would like to introduce and recommend Mr. Gary P. Offerd for consideration for the position of full-time firefighter/paramedic. He comes to Union Township with over twenty-four years of experience in the fire and EMS field, currently holding certifications as a firefighter, fire safety inspector, and a paramedic. It's kind of a homecoming of sorts, Gary worked for us more than a few years ago when he first got his paramedic certification before going to Northern Kentucky and making a career out of the fire service in Northern Kentucky. He has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process, including his oral and written testing, interviews, background, driving, and polygraph examinations. I would recommend tonight a conditional offer of employment to Mr. Offerd as a full-time firefighter/paramedic at a rate of pay consisting with step one of the collective bargaining agreement effective April fifth, 2022, at seven AM, pending successful completion of a physical examination.
Gentlemen, at this time, entertain a motion to hire Gary P. Offerd for the position of firefighter/paramedic step one, in accordance to the collective bargaining agreement.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
No, first off, I think you have the best-looking haircut in the room, so.
Thank you, thank you.
But you bring a lot of experience, twenty-five years. But you bring a lot of experience, 24 years. That's excellent. That's great. And glad to have you back, sir.
Do you go to go to the same barber?
We do, we do, actually.
Are you going there on like a half-off sale or something?
Work with what I got.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll close out discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you. And we'll hold pictures at the end with all the new personnel actions. We'll do pictures up front so we can do some family and anyone that's in attendance with you tonight. All right, gentlemen, at this time, Chief Daimling, if you'd please present, we've got Corey Deschawn.
Thank you. Secondly, tonight, I would like to introduce and recommend Mr. Corey Deschawn for consideration for a position of full-time firefighter, paramedic. He comes to Union Township with about two years of experience in the fire and EMS field, currently holding certifications as a firefighter, too, and a paramedic. He, too, has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process. I would recommend a conditional offer of employment as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, consistent with step one of the collective bargaining agreement effective April 5 at 7:01 a.m., again, pending successful completion of a physical examination.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, entertain a motion to hire Corey Deschawn for the position of firefighter, paramedic, step one, in accordance with collective bargaining agreement, effective date April 5, 2022, 7:01 a.m.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, gentlemen? Thank you, Mr. Deschawn. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Corey. Chief Daimling, if at this time, if you'd present Travis Page.
Thanks again, Mr. Logue. Travis Page, for consideration for the position of full-time firefighter, paramedic. He, too, has about two years of experience in the fire and EMS field, also holding certifications as a firefighter, too, in the state of Ohio, and a paramedic. He, too, has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process, and I would recommend a conditional offer of employment tonight to Mr. Page as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, at a rate of pay consistent with step one of the collective bargaining agreement effective April 5, 2022, at 7:02 p.m., pending successful completion of a physical examination.
Our gentleman, at this time, will entertain a motion to hire Travis Page for the position of firefighter, paramedic, step one, in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, with an effective date of April 5, 2022, at 7:02 a.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Chief, I'm liking the trend, sir. It's a good hire.
I was waiting for that.
Yeah, yeah.
All good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Page. Call roll, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Travis.
Congratulations. Chief Daimling, at this time, we present Victoria Reinhardt.
Mr. Dills, we're certainly going to buck the trend here. This evening, I would like to introduce and recommend Ms. Victoria Reinhardt for consideration for the position of full-time administrative assistant. After earning a bachelor's degree in business management with a concentration in organizational leadership, she has worked for nearly 20 years in office management with UC Health and most recently with the West Claremont School District. She has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process, and tonight I would recommend an offer of employment to Ms. Reinhardt as a full-time administrative assistant at a rate of pay of $26.50 an hour, with 40 hours of vacation time and 120 hours of sick leave, effective April 18, 2022, at 8:00 a.m., in accordance with the Union Township Personnel and Policies Manual.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, entertain a motion to hire Victoria M. Reinhardt for the position of a full-time administrative assistant with effective date April 18, 2022, rated $26.50 an hour, and providing for the award of one week, 40 hours vacation time, and 120 hours of sick leave carried forward from previous public employer. And this would be to be awarded upon the effective date of employment. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen? Ms. Reinhardt, I understand that you started down this process nearly more than eight months ago.
Yes.
Thank you for coming back and being here. I was not aware of you coming through the process in the past, but I've received good information here recently as far as it's why you're here. And Chief Daimling fully support what you do in the fire department and who you put forward for selection and for hiring. So, you know, our department heads, all of you, you always have that from this board. So, Ms. Reinhardt, just thank you for staying with us and coming back eight months later.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll close discussion with that, gentlemen. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. All right, gentlemen, we'll step around, we'll get photos with all the new personnel. And give them a little bit of time, but if they've got anything additional to do. Corey, you want to grab one down here?
Oh, yeah.
Looking for it. It's on its way. Do you have a joke for when everyone leaves? Yeah, oh, there is a little cohort over there, huh?
This is all going very, very well. Very well.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, we'll continue with department reports. Fire Emergency Medical Services, Chief Stan Daimling.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. For the month of February, the department handled 188 fire and service calls, 520 emergency medical responses. It's all 527 patients, and we transported 369 patients to local hospitals. The department completed 1,314 hours of training, participated in 17 public education details. We had 129 hours of training hours of ride-along time in the paramedic units, completed two life safety inspections, and participated in five inspections with the county building department. And tonight, I would just like to say thank you to Corey Wright. Obviously, you know, Corey, over the last 16 years, we've had many shared experiences, and we'll leave it at that, in projects that, as a result, have made Union Township a better place, and I thank you for everything that you've done for Union Township. And lastly, because I spoke way too much tonight, I just wanted to say a welcome to Susan Cohen Ayers, and welcome you to Union Township. That concludes my report.
Thank you, chief. Gentlemen, any comments?
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it very much. Police Department, Chief Scott Gaviglio.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. For February 2022, the Communication Center handled approximately 4,600 calls for service, completed 400 and over 400 juvenile and adult court-related documents that were processed and delivered to the court for processing. Public affairs, we are still conducting robbery response talks at the local banks. We did CAFED Credit Union this month, and we are hosting citizen riders. On patrol side of things, we took 305 incident reports, investigated 104 crashes, conducted 412 traffic stops, issued 147 citations, 275 warnings, conducted 488 field interviews, made 109 criminal arrests, 105 traffic arrests, and we served 139 warrants. K-9 unit for the month recovered 36 grams of marijuana, 13 and 1/2 grams of heroin, 201 grams of methamphetamine, and the 65 narcotics tablets. I can point your attention to the 201 grams of methamphetamine. That's a large seizure. That's second month in a row we've had a large seizure in conjunction with our work, and of course, I work with the Claremont County Narcotics Unit. When time allows and the agenda slows down a little bit, I would like to show some of the good work we do with the Claremont County Narcotics Unit. We obligate officers to there, and it really helps the overall product of the county. But this was the second month in a row we had a large seizure. Through February, we've closed 55 cases and investigations. Staff services, we're still working some internal things I'll be able to share with the board here in a couple of months. Training-wise, we had 162 hours of training, and fuel cost was over $10,000 with 34,000 miles driven. That concludes my report. To Mr. Wright, I thank you. Met you 16 years ago, and it doesn't seem like that, does it?
No.
It just doesn't, does it? And I look back at everything we've went through together, separately, and then together again, and it just doesn't seem like that. I have nothing to say, except it's been my pleasure, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. Thank you for everything. Ms. Ayers, welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you soon. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, chief. Gentlemen, any comments from the board?
Yeah, chief, if you want next month or the month after, you put on the agenda, I'd like to see that, yeah.
Sure, sir. I'll take care of that for you. I'll get it together for you and get it together.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Yeah, appreciate the work.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Gaviglio. That'd be great to see that work highlighted. Thank you. And this time, we'll keep moving. Service Department, Mr. Matthew Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. And the Cemetery Division, from February 1 through the 28th, 25 burials were performed, generating $15,300. Six resident graves were purchased, generating $3,300. Two non-resident graves were purchased, generating $3,000, and four columbarium niches were purchased, generating $4,950. And one cremation scattering garden was purchased, generating $500. The total amount generated for the period was $28,907.60. And the Roads Division, the staff treated the roads for snow and icy conditions on February 3 through the 7, and the 13th, and 14th. A total of 27 work orders were completed on many township roads, and 327 potholes were repaired on 26 township streets. And the Parks Division, staff completed installing new fixtures, soap and toilet paper dispensers in the park restrooms, and staff continues to work on landscape bed improvements and bed maintenance at the township facilities. And that concludes my report. But also, I would like to say, obviously, Mr. Wright, you and I were kids when we started here, and we've shared a lot of good memories together, a lot of life lessons. So I truly appreciate not only your friendship, your guidance, leadership. Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And I know I'll still see you after you leave here, but, you know, it's been good working with you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Ayers, congratulations as well. Look forward to seeing you shortly.
Gentlemen, any comments for Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Taylor, you continue to be the hero of Union Township, you and your people. You know, you did, your people did a fabulous job getting the snow removed, and now filling potholes. And, you know, when there's customer complaints, I mean, you guys are all over it, and that's awesome. And then, most recently, working with the county to get a cleanup crew, a work crew, in Union Township picking up litter. And I don't know where all they went, but, you know, where I drive by every day, and a lot of people in this room, down on the bottom of Rumpkey Road in Old 74, it's a night-and-day difference. I mean, it's just tremendous. So my thanks to you organizing all that, and my thanks to the county commissioners for their part in making that happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Second that. That's night-and-day difference with that litter pickup.
It's a lot of blurs.
Yeah. Mr. Dills?
Mr. Taylor, yeah, I agree with everything that Mr. Becker just said. Do you, last month's meeting, we had a public comment section where he was bringing up, the gentleman brought up flowers on the cremation part of the cemetery. Is he, have you updated all by chance on that, or if not, that's okay?
No, I've actually got a little, I gave a report, obviously.
Was that in your report? Did you just read off?
He did not read it off. He submitted information.
Yeah, I just submitted information to, obviously, the board. I gave some pictures and.
I see right here. Got it.
Some of the other, the items. So in previous boards, whenever they established that we were going to obviously have columbariums, we set it up in the rules and regulations from day one that we were not going to decorate, obviously, the faces of the columbariums. And in an effort to kind of keep it clean, you know, and aesthetically pleasing, we understand that people will do one of more in loved ones. And that's where I've talked previously about maybe trying to create a separate little area. That being said, to save some cost, the granite is not as thick, so it was thinner plates. However, they're still secure. If you try to core a hole through the, to allow for a base to be put on there, you run the risk and liability of basically breaking the face plate, which, you know, we may be liable for that. So that was one of the things. And even the gentleman who we buy the columbariums from, he even said, you know, obviously, he would sell us the bases, but he didn't recommend that because of that reason. That all being said, we can, you know, we're open to trying different things. We're trying to come up some alternative solutions. However, people still do decorate down there. I had some photos of people, you know, that, you know, still decorate those areas down there, so.
Do we have any plans to build another area for ashes to put in in the future, or no?
Yes.
So maybe in the future, any new ones that we build, can they be a thicker grade?
Yes, thank you.
So, because I understand that, you know, these are sectioned off, and if somebody brings in a flower that's two feet long, it's going to disrupt another person, and I understand that. So we can have limitations on how, and then any, what's the current setup with the existing, I assume they're in a urn, and they can just, are they able to be taken out?
It's kind of like a safety deposit box.
So hypothetically, if we, the new ones that we build, can we give the current? So hypothetically, if we, the new ones that we build, can we give the current families that are there the option to pull theirs out and put in a new one, if they choose to decorate?
I'm sure that we can, you know, explore that as an option, I guess.
Okay, fair enough, yeah.
Yeah, that is an option to order a columbarium with thicker granite. It just costs more money. At the time, when we ordered them, we weren't allowing decorations, which is why we went with the more conservative route.
Got it. I would like for the future, I mean, I like to weigh the cost of it, but, yeah, I think it's pretty important for people to put flowers on peoples there for their birthdays and death anniversary days, things like that. So I'd like to just check into the cost for the next time we build one.
Certainly would.
And, yeah, one more. If you guys have any questions?
Yeah, no, I'll just, I'll add on to where you're at, but go ahead, if it's a subject.
Not a subject, no.
Okay, so, yeah, just the thought that comes to mind as you're sharing that, Mr. Taylor, I mean, very candidly, it seems as, the very thin granite did not allow for the decorations to be able to occur. And I just, it's kind of profit over people completely, and it's just treating everyone as a number, and not what we are doing with Mount Moriah Cemetery. I mean, we're really valuing those loved ones that are there. So I think it'd be great to either research what Mr. Dills is putting forward as far as new columbarium niches that have the thicker granite, and it could be, we could work through those that are interested. But then you run into, you know, uniformity. One of you is not like the other. So I think if you could research also, if, can there be a concrete box, or can there be some type of monument to each side of each one or in front of one that has some type of, you know, durable vase or good that is there that will allow the families to leave mementos and treasure their loved ones? In that sense, I think that'd be the part of the process to research into. And I know that there's always going to be maintenance concerns if it's a base and fills up, but I trust you on that. Just, I know that we'll take a little bit of time to research into it, so appreciate it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Second thing is, you're spearheading the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Yes.
Any update on that applicants?
We have four applicants right now.
Excellent, okay.
I know that we need at least one more to, you know, try and achieve, I believe, the quorum that they were looking for.
Okay.
That was, but I have four applicants right now. I've started reviewing the applications, and I've reached out to each one, then let them know that we received their applications. And obviously, we can, you know, we can move forward. Obviously, we have it on Facebook and our website and everything else.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I would highly encourage anyone interested, and this is in my public, in my comments at the end, but I'll make it now since I asked the question. If anyone's interested in applying for that, we'd love, we just opened this up. Our surrounding townships have Park and Recreation Committees, a volunteer committee, and basically for a panel to give input on what they'd like to see at our parks. So you don't have us three making that decision. You can, you know, we'd like to have the residents, you know, give their input. And so I would encourage anyone to put their application with Mr. Taylor, and let's get that, get that rolling. So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's great. Thank you for pushing that along, Mr. Taylor. Even in that sense, you know, obviously, there's been, there's been a lot of great initiatives that this board's been working on, and I definitely would say that, even with four applicants, that is something that so far, I think, we've not said, let's push that really hard. I mean, you know, so that's kind of, that's kind of a trickle right now as to where I think that we'll go with this in the end. But that is, you know, that's anytime you're creating something new from the ground up. I mean, there's lessons to be learned, and, but, you know, that's, you gotta be moving to be able to make change, you know, and be able to get any traction. So I think that's a great start. The other thing I'll add on that, Mr. Dills, is it creates the avenue also for more community engagement involvement. Anderson Township has the Anderson Parks Foundation. So you get to avoid the park levies or offset that by having essentially the ability to utilize a 501(c)(3). And so, for example, we've got our Union Township Community Investment Corporation, which is already a 501(c)(3). Strategically, does it align to work within that range, or do you, do you have another organization stand that up, or have those volunteers stand that up? And they can fundraise, and that gives the ability for, you know, our local businesses, sponsors, you name it, to have an actual viable vehicle to write a check. So even if it's the Summer Concert Series, which I think we'd all be for to gain sponsorship for, but again, we gotta, right, we gotta, we gotta take steps before we run. So just some thoughts of where some of that can go. And again, leave it to the department heads to lead and carry out. So that's all I have. So thank you, Mr. Taylor.
My apologies. I didn't look under old business. I knew it was there. I just forgot. Sorry.
All right, gentlemen, it's time to move planning and zoning. Mr. Corey Wright, the interim Township Administrator, followed by the Administrator's Report by Mr. Corey Wright.
Thanks, sir. This will be the last planning and zoning report. I'm sure there's many in the crowd that would be thankful that this is the last planning and zoning report that I'll make.
No.
But, you know, for the month of February, we handled 38 inspections, six citizen complaints, issued four warning citations, and two 15-day non-compliance letters, and we re-inspected nine existing violations. With regard to permit activity, we had four new commercial permits in the month of February, three changes of occupancy, 10 signed permits, and 15 single-family home permits, 52 permits for the month of February, $13,095 in permit revenue for the month. That concludes the planning and zoning report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Gentlemen, anything on the planning and zoning?
Nothing.
Please move, move along the Administrator's Report, Mr. Wright.
Sure. Thank you, sir. The open checkbook was up to date at the time that the report was prepared through January, and I believe the fiscal office uploaded that information. So there's got to be some follow-up on the treasurer's side, but that should be up to date in February soon. Tonight, we have a couple of items, just a couple of items to update the board on, the Summer Concerts Bulletin. We do have food trucks. We'll have food trucks back here for the summer concerts. And there'll be an item on the agenda to kind of formally establish the Farmer's Market project here at the Civic Center for 2022. Our staff, Brenda Dotson, has done an incredible job, really spearheading that. I gave her those projects, and she ran with them.
That's awesome.
So really excited about that. Regarding the Safe Haven baby boxes, that was an important project that the board advanced and talked about at the last meeting. Working with Chief Daimling on that very closely. Chief's really been running with that. Thank you, Chief. And we have procured the alarm monitoring vendor. There's a six-week lead time on the delivery, and they're obtaining estimates for the installation. And Chief, am I wrong in saying that Station 50 is the most likely candidate at this time?
It is. And for anybody that doesn't know, Station 50 is the one on Old 74 behind Holman Motors.
Excellent. We did have several candidates for the board to consider this evening. Thank you for your support on that, and for helping us with the staffing needs in the township. Open enrollment was completed. All went very well. The road resurfacing project is on the agenda for this evening. Seek authorization to go out to bid. We have proposed some increase from the prior year to address several areas of critical need in the township from our paving perspective. We have not heard back from LOI yet on the LOI that was authorized under a prior board. That process continues to be very slow. Let's see here. I think the board was able to successfully execute the service time program this evening. That's outstanding. I'm glad that that process will move forward, and I think it was well received. And everybody that I talked to was very excited to be able to come before the board this evening, so that's positive. The zoning department received a permit for Outback Steakhouse on East Gate North Drive, so we issued that. I know it's not, it's not a unique unit, one-off restaurant, but it's a welcome addition to the community, certainly. It's great to have more sit-down dining. I think the community asked for that, and I'm glad the market's responding. There's some purchase orders on the agenda. We do have some purchase orders to do some repairs and some maintenance in the Civic Center offices. That's on there this evening. Just a couple of items to note. We do need to schedule a CIC meeting at some point to recognize officers and appoint an executive director. We will need the, an interim Township Administrator to serve for about 10 or 11 days. And then we also need an interim zoning director. Those are items on the agenda for the board this evening. Online permitting continues. Craig is working very hard to implement that process and get that integrated into our website. We did receive a zoning case for April, which the board will hear. And I've been working with Mr. Campbell and his staff, Ms. White and Ms. Cobb in their office, to go over the anticipated TIF receipts and processing those, making sure that all of our payments and distributions are up to date as required, so the board will see those. And that concludes my report. I'm overwhelmed by all the kind things people say. And it's exciting, but, you know, it's also, I'm a little nervous. And I guess I get a little emotional, but, thank you.
Corey, we love you, and that's good. Hope to always be able to field any of those calls, and we continue to, we've talked late, late into the night on getting this incredible amount of work done. I mean, if you see this, what this man has been able to, to wear those many multiple hats and to start to execute day one on our vision, and at the same rate being solicited to, you know, pursue his dream and his vision, I don't bat an eye at that. That's great. You know, you gotta, you gotta, like I said, we'll always be there for you.
The other thing I'd like to say, congratulations, Susan. You know, I think she'll do an outstanding job, and this is a great community. So, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Gentlemen, any quick comments?
Yeah.
The Outback Steakhouse, so correct me if I'm wrong, but that's going to go in where current, where the Starbucks used to be. It's like a triplex there. It's completely abandoned.
Yes.
That building's been on my radar for a while, to either level it or put something in there. I think it was a video store there at one time. I'm not sure what else would have been there. So that's the building.
It was a Hollywood Video, a long, long, long time ago, and Starbucks. And then there was a GameStop in there, I think, some kind of video game store.
Yeah.
And so that'll be a great project. You know, East Gate North has been, you know, it really started after the, kind of the East Gate Boulevard reconfiguration came. If everybody remembers what that looked like, it seems like an eternity ago, but it was really only about five or six years ago. And then we sort of had a full, a full-court press on that side of East Gate. And, you know, you've got a new hotel that hopefully is going to finish it, Dunkin'. You've got all the restaurants in Meyer there. You've got kind of the whole transformation of the, of the, what do they call the, what was the name of that place? It was like a Homeworld or something? Garden Ridge, that's what it was, Garden Ridge. So, kind of looks totally different now. A lot of investment, a lot of money invested over there. Really looks nice, and it's probably one of the busier areas in the township, aside from Jungle Gyms, which I drive by every day, and it's just, it's unbelievable. One thing I noted, I had to go to OKI this morning, and went to OKI, and I was on 275, and I drove past TQL. I don't think there was an inch of asphalt that wasn't covered by a car over there. It's really phenomenal what they're doing with the number of employees there, and just really a testament to this community, and kudos to them for their growth and all the positive things that they've done and continue to do. So just, I, you know, great things are happening.
Ms. Wright, you're going to be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
And we're losing a friend and a family member, not just an employee, so.
Thank you.
Thank you again, brother.
You're absolutely right talking that with, with TQL. Again, it's just, it's, you know, it's part of my later announcement, but just great to see that continued willingness and interest to want to partner here with the Union Township. Food trucks, yeah, big congratulations, you know, yourself and Brenda working to get those done. Help us, you know, again, Rome's not built in a day. You gotta take these things step by step. So it's been fantastic to see what we're able to do this year, and fantastic what we're going to be able to do next year, you know, as we even have, have more of a structure and have built out more of what services this township can provide to residents. Same thing goes for Farmer's Market. I want to touch on the road resurfacing. Mr. Wright, I know you said that that's something that's been increased this year significantly from years past. Years past, it's been nearly, nearly nothing spent on, on the road repairs, $200,000 or so, $300,000 or so for 133 miles of road. And that, the roads like itself, like any time when budgets are pushed down, and we don't look to our department heads to push up their budgets, because they're the ones that have the people on the ground that know best what is falling into disrepair. We've got a litany of capital budget items that are in disrepair. And it's something that, you know, as we kind of reverse this budget process and have our department heads push that budget up, you know, that's the challenge I think we're going to see, is we're going to see between racking and stacking which capital budget items to move forward. But, you know, it's, we'll address partly of one tonight with the purchase orders and the Service Department. But, you know, Mr., or Chief Gaviglio, I know the bathrooms are atrocious situation at the Police Department. As Chief Daimling, I know the bathrooms are atrocious situation at 48. So, you know, but again, a strategic plan is what's impactful for all of that. So we will get there. Mr. Wright, if you could recap, I saw you continue to receive and fill an extraordinary number of records requests. How many hours was that for the month of February? The month of January was 30 hours of your time, which takes you away from 30 hours of productive time and about 30 hours of legal time in the month of January. So where do you think you, you referenced?
You know, it's been about comparable for the month of February.
30 hours.
Yeah. I don't have an estimate on legal time.
Okay. I talked with Bricker and Eckler, and they have roughly an estimate of 15 hours for the month of February, and I did not hear back from Larry Barbier on his time for his ongoing litigation effort that was levied against the township on January 3rd before this board even had a, had a meeting. So I know he's got time invested with that as well. You know, and it's, it's, it's something that's been on the rise, and it's only come as a result of the voice of the people at the last election and what change we've been through. So, but, you know, as you make change, challenges present, and you gotta stay focused on not being distracted and just moving forward. So the TIF distribution summary that you brought up, through great collaboration with the Otter's Office, and I'll share this, gentlemen, so you're aware. You've heard Mr. Campbell talk about $2 million deficit for police and fire safety services. This will be something I'll ask the Otter's Office to maybe introduce or speak a little bit more with us on later in the year when the agenda allows it. But for your knowledge, I had an assumption from getting educated on the TIF revenues and the TIF residential revenues and the last levy that was put forward, and instead of generating $4 million in revenue, the last levy for police and fire is going to generate $4.7 million in revenue. So there's an extra $700,000 that was essentially not communicated, not planned for. That's going to go into at least part of that one point, or that $2 million deficit that Mr. Campbell was talking about. So I think there's always areas for us to improve how things are handled and communicated, and again, we'll, we'll just look to continue to do that as we move forward. We've got to be mindful what the impact of those TIF funds are and the ability to collaborate with something like the Otter's Office to get the real answers. So, Mr. Wright, that's all I had for that. So thank you very much. I'll keep us moving along. Gentlemen, no further comments. All right. We'll move on to public hearings. Mr. Wright, if you'd introduce Township Zoning Case 122-Zulu.
Thank you, sir. Case 122Z is an application by KRR Real Estate LLC. This is for two parcels. Hang on a second, Mr. Wright. Mr. Rumpke, if you want to, you want, go ahead and pass those out, and then I'll...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And, Mr. Chairman, those are just revisions to the site plan that the applicant has prepared based on the zoning commission hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This application was submitted by KRR Real Estate LLC, 1,000, let's see, 10,084 East Kemper Road, Loveland, Ohio. This is, Mark Rumpke is the applicant. They applied to amend the zoning code for these two parcels, totaling about 13 and 1/2 acres. The properties are zoned B1. They will be rezoned, if approved, to planned development for the development of a recycling and transfer facility. The applicant is proposing a consolidated PD formal and concept plan as permitted under the PD District Regulations. Location of the property is near the intersection of Winding Creek Boulevard and the Olive Branch Stonelock Road in the southeastern quadrant of the township. Parcels are rezoned... Parcels are rezoned within the Winding Creek industrial area adjacent to 32. Property is identified in the Horizon 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the focus area overlay District Regulations as part of the Olive Branch Stone Lake Corridor. In 1991, the property was amended from R1 and M1 to B1. Since that time, the parcels have remained largely vacant despite having the public street there, and then in 2017, there were some overlays approved to accommodate some development. The property is currently zoned B1 business, the properties in the immediate vicinity are zoned B1 and R3. Additionally, State Route 32 runs along the northern property line, which you can see here on the PowerPoint. Land use in the vicinity is office and light industrial use, and the remaining R3 land is vacant with some light vegetation on the property. The Horizon 2030 Plan indicates that the subject property is in the Olive Branch Stone Lake Corridor, the majority is either vacant or undeveloped and otherwise agricultural or just kind of some scrub vegetation. Land to the north is zoned R1 across 32, land in the, to the south of this area is B1, a state residential in M1 District. This corridor is kind of a transitional area, recommend in the plan buffering and landscaping, planned unit development zoning, and preservation of wooded hillsides and other natural areas and access management strategies. The PD District Regulations have been provided for the board. In the staff report, the Fire Department has reviewed the application and recommends approval and has no issues, understanding that life safety and other fire code requirements will undergo a thorough review during the permitting process. The zoning commission met February 23, recommended unanimous approval with 13 conditions. Among those conditions, there was some upgraded building elevations, dress agency comments, water sewer engineering, provided consolidation plat, monument signage, detailed plan for recycling areas, elimination of storage areas along 32, landscape buffering plantings, additional landscaping on frontages, detail on the landscaping plan, and increasing a buffer area, providing a local recycling drop-off area with bins on the site, which would include to be utilized by the community to dispose of home recycling materials such as paper, cardboard, glass, plastic, et cetera, provide pedestrian access internal to the site to make sure that people can walk between the buildings, and provide a noise level report to the board for the file. Reviewing this, approximately, there's three buildings in total, 2,500 square feet for Building 1, 5,625 square feet for Building 2, and the largest building, which would be the construction and recycling demolition area at 24,000 square feet. All the buildings are between 20, 32 feet in height. The site, 4.87 acres of the site is designated recycling storage area. They did, the applicant has provided the plan responsive to the zoning commission recommendations, which the board can see here, this is, they've called out, can't really read that, but I think it says detention. But they've eliminated the storage area here, and then you can see they've got the proposed bin location here. The rest of the site pattern is pretty much unchanged from what was submitted, but the zoning commission conditions can be incorporated through the permit process. So with that, looking at the project, the technical review of the planned development District Regulations, they have required, they have met the requirements of that with regard to the open space, buffering, and all of the other building lot area coverages. The plan is consistent with the Horizon 2030 Plan. In particular, this achieves commercial use within a desired area, close access to State Route 32, adequate vegetation and buffering and landscaping enhancements are proposed for the site. As I indicated, one of the primary concerns when we first got this was the need to allow residents to have a local recycling facility. The addition of the recycling drop-off for the residents would have a positive impact for the community. Access management is appropriate here because Winding Creek is a secondary road, there is no direct access onto Olive Branch Stone Lake, which is positive with the subordinate access onto a local roadway. Other comments are standard comments, LED downward directed dark sky compliant lighting, monument signage, consolidation upon application for a zoning certificate, and incorporation of the other zoning commission recommendations. So the action required this evening is in accordance with Section 680 to 687 of the zoning resolution, the board is to enter a motion to approve, modify, or deny, or approve as recommended, approve with additional modifications, or deny the applicant's request to rezone the property from B1 to PD as submitted and as further recommended by the zoning commission with any other modifications as deemed appropriate by the board. And I'll just take a moment to go through, you can see the upgraded building elevations with some split face block on there per the zoning commission, here's, whoop, I'll go back. This is the best view that we have of the site, really, just demonstrating kind of the light scrub, there's a large utility line that kind of bisects the site with easement, so there's some limitations as to what can be constructed in those areas. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Please approach the podium. If you give your name and address for the record, and then I'll swear you in.
Mark Rumpke, 10090 East Kemper Road, Loveland, Ohio.
I need you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So help me God.
All right. The floor is yours.
I am KRR Real Estate. I'm looking at putting in this recycling transfer station, convenient center, to further go on what Mr. Wright was talking about, more than just offering the community a place to bring their household recyclables, you know, it'll also be a place where, you know, you can bring some of the stuff that is no longer taken curbside, such as mattresses, tires, appliances. We want to put in a metal recycling buyback center at the locations so people, you know, can make one trip, clean out their garage, and get paid for their metals, get rid of their trash, and, as well as recycle construction demolition material. Right now, we operate a construction demolition facility in Loveland, we're on two acres, we're as tight as can be, you've got to move two trucks to get, you know, the one truck and everything, and we want to move here to Union Township and operate the facility here. I want to work hand in hand with Adams Claremont County Solid Waste District and developing, or providing for some of the needs of Claremont County, you know, right now, if you've got a trailer loaded trash, you're going out to Brown County, you're spending, you know, at least an hour going through the landfill, or you're heading to new town landfill, same thing, I mean, this will be a place you can go, it'd be all asphalt, in, out, 15 minutes, get rid of everything, maybe set up a hazardous waste collection also, you know, where people have household chemicals can get rid of them instead of dumping them down the drain or throwing them in the trash. And we want to be an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rumpke. This time, is there anyone else that'd speak in favor? Name and address, and I'll swear you in.
Name's Jeff Flaherty, address is 1 Mook Road, Wilder, Kentucky. I'm the applicant's engineer, just was up here to, up, sorry.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm just up here to answer any technical questions you guys might have about the plans in front of you.
All right, thank you. We will address, once we get to board comments. Is anyone further that would like to speak in favor of the project or speak against the project?
Hello.
Name and address, and I'll swear you in.
Hannah Lubers, and I work with Claremont County, so my work address is 4,400 Haskell Lane. I work for the Office of Environmental Quality and the Solid Waste District. Mr. Rumpke already mentioned some of the things that I wanted to mention, but...
I swear you in real fast, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Part of the public hearing, it's a requirement.
All right. So he already mentioned some of the things that this could bring to the community of Claremont County, but I just wanted to state some of my experience where we do have a lack of a facility like this in the region. I work with the Solid Waste District, many of you probably don't know what that is. We offer a variety of different programs to try and divert waste that goes to the landfill, and so that includes offering public recycling, we do educational programs, and then one of the things that we do is we serve as a guidance to residents and businesses about how to recycle and dispose of different items that they encounter in their homes or businesses, so electronics, televisions, household hazardous waste, and that can include furniture or appliances, or we like to call it in the biz, bulky items and white goods. There's not very good local options for those things, and so when we get those phone calls, I really, I just don't enjoy having to tell residents that their options are pretty limited. If you're lucky enough to live in a township, like Union Township, where you have those community cleanup days, you can save your items up for those and you can get rid of them for free, and so that's pretty nice. But you still have to transport it somewhere, many people don't have that ability, and you have to wait until those events are held. Another option is having your curbside hauler, if you have curbside waste collection, you can have them pick it up, but that often costs $100 or more per item, and you have to wrap it. And then you can go to a landfill, as Mr. Rumpke mentioned, you do have to travel about almost an hour, so you can go to Coal Rain, or you can go to Georgetown. Again, you have to have a vehicle to transport those items, and you still have to pay a fee, I believe the minimum is $39, so. Having a facility like this that's central in Claremont County, I think, does have the, could be an opportunity for residents to be a resource for many of their waste and recycling needs. And I also wanted just to take the opportunity to echo everyone's sentiments with Corey, thank you for serving on our solid waste planning committee in the oh-so-glamorous field of waste disposal. Appreciate all the guidance that you've given us over the years and hope to continue working with you, since you'll still be a resident of Claremont County, so, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Hannah. Is there anyone else at this time that'd like to speak in favor or against? Please provide your name and address, and I'll swear you in.
Yeah, it's Tim Gaggen, 4375 Winding Creek Boulevard.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. There's probably not a whole lot I can say that's going to change anybody's mind with this, but I'm directly across the street from where this is going to go. My biggest concern, well, some of my concerns are noise, number one, because we have offices all up in the front there, directly across the street, and the air, I don't know how, this crushing of the concrete, if it's going to get up in the air and then be spread around in a certain area, I'm sure that you've probably done some EPA stuff, but I'm not quite sure, because I just found out about this a couple of weeks ago. And then I've been in Union Township in my business for 30-plus years, this is my second build that I've done in the township, and I thought it was going to be B1, so now you guys are changing it, and I'm going to be across the street from, you know, let's all face it, we know what these kind of properties end up looking like sometimes, they can be a little bit of an eyesore, not very aesthetically appealing. So I was just curious if you guys did all your due diligence to try to help me out as far as my concerns with maybe landscaping and how high that burn's going to be, so I don't get all that noise, and have to see it, and how high are they going to be stacking these refrigerators and stoves and washers and dryers? I don't know. But I just figured I'd throw that in, there's probably not a whole lot I can do to change anybody's mind, it's like it's pretty far advanced here, just wanted to go ahead and say that.
Thank you, Mr. Gaggen. At this time, would anyone like to speak on this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the floor to the trustees. Gentlemen, have any comments? Mr. Becker?
I'll go next.
Okay. The... Mr. Rumpke, I just got a couple of questions, would you mind coming back up here, I just had a couple of questions for you. So what are your hours of operation there?
7:00 AM until 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to noon on Saturday.
Fair enough. So with, you know, Mr., Corey, can you go back to that previous slide? Perfect. So, you know, we want to be, you know, cognizant of our residents and make sure that we're hearing what they have to say, so, you know, as the last gentleman just said, Mr. Gaggen, so about the noise and the air and the pollution, or any kind of, not pollution, the dust in the air, what are your thoughts on that? Because it looks, well, the other slide showed it a little bit better, but I believe there's residential just south and southwest of there, yeah, right there, so I guess with your Loveland plan that already exists, kind of, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, on the noise, the machine that we use to grind the concrete and grind the wood is not a loud machine. Derek, you want...
Yeah.
On the decibel levels?
That's okay.
I think that report we gave you with the comments has a decibel level report in the back of it, but the decibels are slightly louder than average conversation. Corey, do you...
On what distance?
Yeah, it should be in that packet, we just have it there.
So, okay, okay, so you're saying that your machines are only just as loud as you and I talking, just a little bit?
I see, maximum 91 decibels, is that right? And the emission, 86 decibels?
That's correct.
I got to tell you, I am completely ignorant on decibels, you got to, can you, you got to put it in comparison for me, so I know.
Your nice dishwasher is about 45 decibels or 49 decibels.
Fair enough. A lawnmower, though.
Yeah, what's 91 decibels?
I don't know.
Yeah, so what, yeah, what's comparable to 91 decibels?
Yeah, there should be a chart with...
Well, we just, sorry, we just got this when you walked up here, so...
And you said this, that was how many decibels ballpark?
91 is the maximum.
Okay, it's a belt-driven. Looks kind of familiar to...
Train whistle?
Well, I'm thinking, no, it looks kind of familiar to, if anyone's ever done tree work, a grinder for trees, is that similar?
Stump grinder, yes.
Not stump grinder, well, okay, stump grinder, but also what you feed the limbs into.
Oh, wood chipper?
Yeah, wood chipper, sorry.
Yeah.
Would it be similar to that?
The manufacturer does not require hearing protection to be worn by the workers, which, you know...
Yeah.
Liability standpoint, it's a pretty low standard, you know?
Yeah.
And why, where they'll be doing all the operations is kind of in the back of the, back of the facility there, so they'll be doing all the grinding kind of closest to the expressway, so...
Okay.
We did a comparison that his operation will be quieter than the cars that are driving by for the most part.
Okay. With the potential for the landscaping and the trees, you could almost, you could almost have mitigate that or have an improvement from open, the open field that's hearing the cars right now?
Correct.
Can you give us the slide that has the bunkers? There you go, I mean, it's hard to see. That's where the concrete grinding, wood grinding is drawn, putting the bunkers back there.
So basically, as far as possible from the resident, the nearest residence.
So how many decibels, for example, will Mr. Gaggen hear, he's right across the street, ballpark?
Well, so obviously, as you travel further away, the decibel levels drop, but I mean, it should be way less than a normal conversation that you're having with, if we're standing here five foot away talking, it should be less than that. if we're standing here five foot away talking, it should be less than that.
Okay, fair enough, because I, in the, in your engineering report I see it says, "Federal Highway Administration states that the highway traffic noise typically reaches levels of eighty decibels at a distance of fifty feet away from the highway." So roughly, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So you're, okay, okay.
And we're, we're obviously way further than fifty feet from...
Cory, how far, Mr. Wright, how far is, um, like, plan from the road there?
I can give you just a perspective. They don't have a direct setback from the bins to the roadway, but on the plan, they do show from the property line. And those bins are, uh, you know, I would estimate those bins based on this scale, they're probably twenty feet or thirty feet in depth. So from the, from the back building corner here to the bins is about two-hundred feet.
Okay.
So this is about two-hundred, and then that's probably about another two-hundred. And so you're, you're probably between five and six-hundred feet.
Fair enough.
Plus or minus.
Okay, um...
And then as far as the dust, when they grind that, it has a sprayer on it, so it's constantly spraying water onto the material as it comes out to control the dust.
Fair enough, okay, okay. Um, so, so, well, first off, Mr. Rumke, I appreciate you wanting to invest in Union Township. I appreciate that. I believe in capitalism and I want, want you to grow and expand, absolutely. And so, um, but we also want to, you know, take into account, you know, the residents that live nearby. Thoughts on, on, because I mean, I, to walk out my front yard and to see a recycling center probably isn't the best thing in the world. Thoughts on landscaping a fence some sort? Um, so basically when Mr. Gaggen or anyone else that lives in that, in that area right there, when they walk out their front or back door, thoughts on along the roadway of shrubberies of some sort, a fence? Is that already being presented?
It's, can you talk to the fact of the elevation on that landscaping? It's a twenty, did I see twenty feet, is that right, Mr. Wright?
It starts out as six-foot trees and, you know, they're going to be pines and such, so.
Okay.
I imagine it'd be...
The width of the buffer yard is...
Twenty.
So we're talking about is twenty-foot buffer yards. And then they, they show some varied landscaping, you know? And again, they would need to file an amended, you know, a final landscaping plan as part of the permitting process for review. A couple of items, wherever we have parking that's perpendicular to a roadway, they typically require low shielding or screening to block the headlights from the right-of-way. And then what, what you have here is you certainly don't want to impact existing vegetation to put new trees in. I don't ever think that's a good idea. But at the same time, what you can do is supplement existing vegetation, which, if I can see the slides here, this will give you a good view here. So there's some, there's some vegetation and then we would sup, you know, have them supplement that with some additional screening and buffering. You know, in these areas, kind of these targeted areas through here, and certainly enhance that. And cer, and also make that to where it is not, you know, if it's natural, they really don't need to be in there pruning it or cutting it, let's just let it go, so that it continues to have, you know, a vegetative buffer in that regard.
Currently, currently the recommendations that came from the board is add six-foot landscape buffer plantings, and that's subject to administrative review and approval. So I think with that and having white pines, so that's a six-foot landscape buffer, and then with the tree, so it's already a mound.
Yeah, fair enough.
If I'm describing that correctly, right Cory? So there's already a six-foot mound and then you have the white pine on top.
So what they're actually referencing there would be that the plantings would be a minimum of six feet tall at the time of planting, from grave. Now, certainly, I'm not sure what the level of excavation is going to be on the site with Mr. Rumke clearing grading. They've got a lot of paving. They've got building pads that they're going to be excavating. If they're going to be doing that, what I would recommend is that they balance the site and utilize the dirt from the site to create some additional mounding and then plant screening on top of that where they can, which would also, it does two things, it keeps dirt on the site, reduces their trucking and transportation costs on that, and it also allows for them to provide some additional enhancement to the buffering for the adjacent properties. And I, I would really focus that, quite frankly, on the Wining Creek side. If you're going to do that, because that's where the predominant impact is going to be, to the south. To the north, I think most of this noise is going to get drowned out, you know, in this vegetative area with the highway. I mean, that, that's really, I think, what's going to happen there. So I would really focus, you know, the bulk of my screening and buffering, really beautifying the site, kind of in this area, working with staff to make sure that, you know, this existing vegetation is ringed appropriately and then we balance, kind of in this area, in this area, to the extent that the existing vegetation allows it, so that the buffering is strategic and allows them to waste the dirt on the site. So that's what, where I would recommend.
Mr. Wright, would, would, putting that forward, would we need to modify item six on the recommendations to include for that mounding?
Well, what I would do is just add additional...
With it already being the administrative review and approval, does that fit?
You could do that and get into the, kind of the re, kind of rewording the existing conditions that the zoning commission recommended for. You could incorporate, if you chose to take favorable action, you could, you could, you could approve it as recommended and incorporate an additional condition that they utilize the earthwork from the site to create strategic buffering and to work with the staff to provide landscaping through an administrative process that, that deploys those Norway spruces that we typically call for, those six-foot Norway spruces, on some kind of buffering or mounding that kind of gets them taller initially. And one of our planting strategies is, you know, we stagger those. They're ten-foot on center staggered, but what that ends up doing is, is kind of like the Civic Center here. I remember, again, when I started here, these trees were just a little bit over six feet tall, seven feet tall. They just put them in the ground and now look at them on the backside of the Civic Center. So, I mean, they're probably, some of those are eighteen to twenty feet tall now. So you've got to give them room so that they don't choke each other out, so that the buffer has some life to it. The worst thing you could do is put a buffer in that doesn't survive.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I think this is, it's definitely a need, because, yeah, just personal experience. I would either, I, are you related to the Rumkeys over, you know?
Down the, down the...
Okay, okay, fair enough. I would either go to Rumkey or Colrain, or I would go to Georgetown, or I would go to Newtown. And so, uh, but I, so I definitely think it's a need. I think your business will do very well, and I hope it will, and anything the township can do will definitely help, uh, help your business out anyway. And am I correct in saying that, so you're putting some recycling bins on site and that's just as a courtesy? Is that correct? Did you hear that right?
Correct.
Correct, allow the, to allow residents to utilize recycling, because that currently is an issue in the township, as I think, is just well-known.
Excellent, appreciate that. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Um, so the only thing I would ask is, you know, we're not going to have, you know, dust police. You know, we're not going to have necessarily noise police out there. So the only thing I would ask is, you know, for, for, like, you know, guys like the gentleman that was just up here, if, if the neighbors, you know, if debris is going off and the landscaping and whatever, just make, you know, obviously make sure whoever your onsite manager is to work with the residents is all I would ask. And you just have, you know, just some, you know, because it's basically a land marriage, kind of. So just, just work with them, but I think you've done a great job. And I, if you do with what Mr. Wright says, as far as taking that existing dirt and you fill it out and add it to the mounds, that'll help out with, you know, covering your property. And that's great, so I appreciate you very much, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've, I've run transfer stations and landfills for Rumkey before I, I left on my own, start my own company here. But if, if you ever go off the Lawrenceburg exit there, there's a company called Bestway that has a transfer station right there. And you, you would never know it's there. And that's, that's the way my, it's, it looks great from the outside. Everything's done on the inside. That's the way my facility's going to be.
Excellent, yeah.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I've got a question on the recycling bins. So residents, it's because, it's pointed out, it's something we need in Union Township. So residents can, can drive by your facility, they can drop off mattresses, tires, refrigerators, batteries? Yes, no? Yes?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all the above. Is it, so what is it that, you know, what about, I don't know, oil, cleaning fluids, paint?
I'm going to work with Hannah on the, the liquid chemical, chemical waste. I mean, it's not something that I would handle, but if, you know, uh, through Hannah, through Claremont County, Solid Waste District, and, um, trying to think about Safe Harbors or something like that, you know, if they wanted to set up a facility there to collect hazardous waste, then...
Okay.
Yeah, I want to, I want it to be a convenience center where, you know, you make one trip and not have to go downtown Cincinnati to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, I like the idea of that. So can you think of any examples of, I know, how typical household recycling stuff that you would not be able to take at this facility?
No.
That's awesome, great. Uh, so also, I did a surprise visit out, out to the Loveland facility. I do that kind of stuff. Chase Rumke found me and gave me a tour of the facility. You know, the only dust I found out there that I found annoying was just from the parking lot. But your parking lot here is going to be covered black tubs, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it does sound like dust is going to be an issue. Of course, that compacting machine, that wasn't running at the time I was out there. There was other equipment running. I didn't, I didn't found it to be an issue. I also put in phone calls to talk to people in both Sims Township and the city of Loveland to find out if there were any complaints from residents or business owners. The answer was no. So, you know, that, so it all sounds good to me. I'm not, I'm not seeing any red flags here. I did stop by and I spoke to, um, the, the owners of the Nickel Company, the label people that's up by thirty-two. They had some concerns, more having to do with vibration, anything else, because of the equipment that they have with, uh, that kind of sits on some padding that can't vibrate. Doesn't sound like that's going to be a problem for them, based on the distance of anything you're going to be, that's going to be, you know, hammering. But that is something they were concerned about, and you heard from the gentleman, from the, from, since, from the glass company, he's closer to where you're going to be. But it sounds like you would trust his, his concerns with, with noise and dust and being eyesore. So anything else we should know or be thinking about, or am I wrong on any of those?
I've, I've never heard of the vibration concern before, but it's interesting.
Well, that's, that's why I do due diligence, find out people's concerns are. Yeah, because they have precise, precision printing equipment that if it vibrates, that, you know, they, it'll, you know, that'll, that'll create a problem. So they were just concerned...
Oh, I understand, I understand.
That the earth wouldn't be moving, you know, under their building.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
I've, I've got one question, and it's kind of, I'll direct, actually this way, too, with Mr. Taylor and conversation. How would having this facility that you can take any household item to, and it's right on the edge of the township, year-round, right, our residents will be able to take it to, how that impacts spring junk days and what we do as a service offering for the residents now? And what would that, you know, I know your, your team puts a lot of time and energy into that. What would that look like?
Might not have...
Is there a partnership, or is there, yeah, what, we, can you, can you describe a little bit about the spring junk days to Mr. Rumke and then give a little background on how you think this would impact?
We do our spring junk days and basically we take pretty much everything except for, you know, any hazardous chemicals and tires, obviously refrigerators. We take those, but we get the freon retrieved. Are you going to require the freon be retrieved from refrigerators if you accept them? Or tires, obviously?
I, I believe what we will do is, we will, e- either they have the freon removed, it'll be one price, or we remove the freon, it would be another price.
Okay, alright. Or, yeah, obviously, you talked about having recycling, you know, like metal recycling. Is that something, will you have thirty-yard dumpsters? Is that maybe something we can partner with? We don't pay for recycling dumpsters now for metal. So obviously that, that helps us out. It lessens our Rumkey dumpsters that we do pay for. And obviously, I can see it would be a positive thing for us. Obviously, it would lessen some of the load that we do pay for, you know, if, if residents or, you know, maybe there's something we could work out, you know, with the gentleman.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's kind of the hypothetical I wanted to pose there, Mr. Rumke, as far as the, yeah, the fact that we, we host the spring junk days and they're well-attended and it does well to help get trash up out of the community. But as Mr. Becker's, you know, stated earlier, and what Mr. Taylor addressed, was a lot of littering still in Old Seventy-four. And I heard you say you want to be a part of the community, and this would be your first project inside the community, correct?
Yes.
Inside Union Township, okay?
Inside Union Township, yes.
So have you done any type of partnering with other municipalities or jurisdictions in the past to what I'm describing as far as either taking over their spring junk days or facilitating it, or just additional support to the township? Because if I can, if I can lighten the load on Mr. Taylor's team, then that's a great partnership.
I've, I've ran quite a few in my lifetime. Um, you know, I used to run Rumkey for Indianapolis and all the surrounding counties would have the same thing. They'd have amnesty days or whatever, where you could bring in everything. They had Clean Harbor there, they had, we did tire recycling at the time, you know, and so on and so forth. I've, I've ran them for Ross County, up there in Chillicothe. I ran them for Pickaway County. I ran them for, uh, pretty much all southeast Ohio. So I've, I've, I've done quite a few of them.
Okay. Alright, appreciate that, Mr. Rumke. Uh, Mr. Wright, as I'm kind of pointing this or putting this out there as far as if there's a potential for a new and improved spring junk days, or if it's year-round, do you have, do you see any, is there any?
Let me turn my mic on. Uh, spring junk days, uh, spring and fall junk, junk days are incredibly popular events here in the township. I, I don't know how many roll-off containers Mr. Taylor generates, but it's a, it's a whole bunch. And it is a, uh, it's a week-long heavy lift in the spring. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Taylor and I talked about, because the fall is so busy adding one additional day and that, that would be huge in the fall. But I don't know that we certainly want to make, you know, part of the, the excitement around junk days is it only happens two times a year.
Okay.
And it is such a large commitment from staff and resources that I, I certainly would not recommend that we make it year-round on our, on our property. But I think it's...
That's the question I'm asking, as far as if it was their property.
Well, I think that it's great that we have, uh, this resource in the township if the board approves it. We've got a couple of great resources. I mean, we would have this facility here if the board approves that. Um, and then there's a, a facility down on Round Bottom as well that, that does, that does, I think, mostly metal recycling. It's primarily like aluminum and steel, stuff like that. But I mean, these are critical components of really green, green infrastructure, green industry. You know, you have to be able to do these things if you want to reuse and you want to, you know, deploy those resources and keep things out of landfills. So, um, you know, I, I don't know what opportunities there would be for, quote, "year-round junk days." I certainly don't think the township has the capacity to do year-round junk days in our facility.
Uh, I guess part of the question is to be able to offload some of the manpower and resources that the township currently deploys for those two-week-long events. Is there an opportunity to partner?
Well, I mean, the, the opportunity is that the board approves the facility, the facility's there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think that's part of the opportunity.
Yeah, I really don't think you'll need to, the junk days, once we get up and going. I mean, it's nice to be free, but, um, I mean, if you've got a facility and take, take a couch to and get, get rid of it for twenty, twenty-five bucks versus holding on to it for five months in your garage before you have to take it, I mean, I just, I...
There, there, yeah, I think to Mr. Rumke's point, I mean, there, there'll be some cost-benefit analysis on the people that make that decision as to whether to keep, have it take up space. And I guess it depends on what time of year it's taking up space in your garage. If it's, you know, November to March, it's probably, I can't get it out of my garage fast enough. If it's March to November, it's probably, I don't know, so.
Okay.
But I, you know...
That's value-added, so, appreciate it.
Good.
Any other, okay?
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rumke.
Alright, gentlemen, so at this time then, um, if, if you got, if there's no further discussion, then we are looking for a motion. Uh, we're being asked tonight to... Here's, in accordance with section six-eight-zero and six-eight-seven of the zoning resolution, for the board trustees, enter motion to approve, as recommended by the zoning commission, approve with additional modifications or deny the applicant's request to rezone the subject property B-one, Business District to PD, Plan Development District, as submitted herein, and with any further modifications deemed appropriate by the board. I brought up one... up one potential modification there, which would be an item 14 to be added to the recommendations, and that would be to utilize the earthwork from site to provide strategic buffering with the Norway spruces and an approval with the Union Township administrative staff. Sounds like you're both supportive of, of that additional recommendation. So, looking for a motion then to approve with the additional modifications, the 14 modifications. And do I have a motion on that? Or you want to make the motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve Union Township's zoning case 1-22Z with the approved modifications.
Second.
And we'll call, roll Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Rumke.
Good luck.
Mr. Gaggins, thank you for coming and speaking with us tonight. We hope we're able to address your concerns and hear you and just stay in touch with us as well as far as if, if there's something that's ongoing. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, pressing forward. We've, we have the old business. However, the service department conversation went into cemetery, column burial, floor arrangement update. So with the timeliness of the agenda, I would look to move forward to the new business items if you're comfortable with the old business items already being accomplished there with that conversation previously. All right, on to new business item, item A, approval of payments. Mr. Wright, you can introduce.
Yes, Mr. Campbell.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell.
This, this is the approval of the monthly payments that Mr. Campbell prepares. It would be the, the first item, sir.
Okay, sorry. So, gentlemen, take the motion, entertain a motion to approve payments as prepared by Mr. Campbell, fiscal officer. Sorry, who are they?
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Roll call, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item B, gentlemen, we're being asked to approve and have a motion to approve the monthly financial report as prepared by Mr. Campbell, fiscal officer.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we've got several purchase orders in front of us this evening. Mr. Wright, if you would introduce the purchase orders.
Sure. First purchase order is for $50,000 to Bricker &amp; Eckler LLP for miscellaneous legal fees. Second purchase order is to Shamrock Companies for $53,000 for the annual newsletter, annual report and mailing costs. Pitney Bowes for retail postage meter for the amount of $50,000. United States Postal Service for retail postage and the amount of $50,000. Lexipol for the annual fire policy manual and daily training bulletins, $10,531.14. Alpha Omega Industries, replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus through the Houston Galveston area cooperative purchasing authority, $494,414.37. Stryker Sales Corporation for their annual technical service agreements. Axon Enterprise Inc. for body cameras and licensing in year two. And the, I'm sorry, Stryker was for $23,000, I apologize. Axon was for $53,905.20. And again, that's for body cameras, year two. Motorola Solutions for the Call Works 911 system yearly service fee for $28,000. Fleet Corps Technologies for estimated fuel usage for the police department, amount of $26,000. Bramble Mower and Sales for a new Skag Turf 72-inch mower for the parks, $14,879. Rush Truck Centers of Ohio Inc. for a new 2023 International Dump Truck in the amount of $220,000. And ACH Services Inc. for the Civic Center offices for some painting and drywall repair in the amount of $12,500. That concludes the purchase orders.
All right, gentlemen, to have a motion to approve purchase orders, then we can open up for discussion.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, gentlemen. Any purchase orders?
Good.
Okay. Just one question, Mr. Wright. The Shamrock Companies, Inc., the newsletter and annual report, printing and mailing, it's $53,000. Is that commitment now, that's going to commit us for the, for the next year, correct? For the township newsletter and the annual for the printing and mailing. So if we want to pursue in the future a more digital strategy, are we going to have any flexibility there? Are we already?
So, so we, we already have a dig, we produce a digital newsletter now that gets published to our website. That, the bulk of that is mailing costs. You know, there's, there's a printing cost component, a mailing cost component of that. So you're really, if you think about it, our newsletter is quarterly. So you have a spring, summer, fall and winter. So you're not necessarily obligated for all $53,000. And Mr. Campbell would attest, I mean, the bills come in usually, what, April for the first quarter, July for the second quarter, you know, October, November for the third quarter, and then, you know, either at the end of the year or at the beginning of the following year for the winter newsletter edition. So you're not necessarily, you know, you don't have to pay them upfront for the whole year. You're, you're basically paying them on a per-production run basis. So, you know, that.
So if we want to make some strategic changes with that, we're, we'll have that ability.
You would have that ability.
Okay, that's great. Just like you said, so much cost into mailing costs where we can look at.
Yes.
Okay. That's great. And then, no, that's great. No, no further discussion there. I'm just going to point out to Mr. Taylor, be great to see some, you know, I used to cut grass years and years and years ago, and be great to see some stripes out there then with that tiger. So, and then the international dump truck, I know that's something that's definitely been needed with the breakdowns with the, you know, 20-plus-year-old trucks and, and the, the rust through and the, and the bins on them right now. So again, some of the items that are in disrepair, and I know that you can, you, you even utilize a second truck, but again, we can have, I think, more of a strategic discussion on the capital budget items as we move forward. So with that, gentlemen, roll call, if we want a discussion, then we'll go to roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item D, gentlemen, 2022 Red Waste Resurfacing Bid Authorization. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement received bids relative to the 2022 Union Township Red Way Resurfacing Project?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
None.
All right. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, to establish 2022 Union Township Spring Junk Days, do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell?
No discussion.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item F, Union Township 2022 Farmers Market at the Civic Center. Do I have a motion to authorize the township administrator and interim township administrator advertise 2022 Union Township Farmers Market otherwise. Publicize the event on various media platforms, including the website and social media.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, Mr. Wright, thank you for spiriting that with, and Brenda's handling that, correct?
Yes.
Is she here?
Yes, she's right there. Thank you, Brenda.
Hey, thank you very much, very much. And now, she, she has an extensive background in that, is that correct?
That's right. I believe that Brenda did a whole lot of things for senior services before she joined us here. And she also, I, I won't divulge from where, but from parts out east. And they have a significant amount of acreage that they, that they farm as well. So she's really jumped in with both feet and doing a great job on the project, so.
Yeah, it's very exciting, Brenda. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate it. I will be a customer personally. And so, thank you, thank you for spearheading that. That means a lot. You didn't have to do that, and I appreciate that. So thank you, Ms. Brenda.
It's going to definitely look great on Friday evenings to, to be out at the front corner of the, of the lot there. So closed.
Yeah, one more thing. Yeah, it was a few months ago, I guess it was sometime last year, I was up in Madison, Wisconsin. And it's on the weekends, I'm sure it's Saturday, Sunday, every Saturday, Sunday, for one or the other, whichever it was. And around the state capitol, that whole city block was a giant farmer's market. And, you know, it's full of vendors, full of people. It was a pretty exciting event. And I thought it was pretty cool. And I think it'd be great to have something here in Union Township. It's not going to be that big, but, you know, we can give it a shot, see how it works out.
It's great.
Absolutely, it's great. All right, gentlemen, we'll close discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to item G, Union Township Debt Review and Discussion. I'll give the floor to you, Mr. Becker.
All right. So, the backstory on this, I guess to begin with, is, so this was, I guess it was over the summer, I started looking at, you know, township financial reports. And I'm looking at a line called debt servicing, and I'm doing some quick math and, and, you know, comparing it to total revenues and total expenses. The debt servicing number was almost 40% of our total expenses. So that sounded like a lot to me. I didn't know if I should be alarmed by that or not, or, or my level of concern. So, so it did concern me. And then I learned, this little time went by, learned that part of that debt servicing is actually the refinancing of short-term notes. So it kind of inflates, if you will, that, that, you know, 40% of 38-point-something percent number. However, begs another question, okay? If we're refinancing short-term notes and a large dollar amount of them, and we are in inflationary environment, which was starting up last summer, then it's just a matter of time, as we know from past history, the Fed's going to start raising rates. And when the rates start going up, we're going to be refinancing all the short-term debt. And our, and our debt maintenance cost, interest expense, is going to be going up with it. So, which of course begs the question, okay, how concerned do I need to be about all of that? And, and of course, what nobody knows is how soon will rates go up, how fast and how far. Well, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see as time goes by. So, you know, so then, you know, let's fast forward to January, February, I'm asking, you know, questions, sitting down with our fiscal officer and interim administrator and had a meeting. So there was four of us in a meeting from a company called Bradley Payne. And so, you know, this, this, this meeting was like, I guess we'll call it Union Township Debt for Dummies. I was a dummy in the room. So, you know, I got this packet here that's got, you know, detailed information on, on the payoff schedules and such. And, and so what I did is put together some charts, kind of one-stop shopping, see it up on their, on the board. And that big blue, I'm going to spend most of my time here just talking about this first chart, the rest I'm going to go through pretty quickly. But that big blue Pac-Man-looking graph there, I know you can't read that from where you're sitting, but all this is going to be on the website for, for the township, so you can look at it, at your leisure. But that big item there is $22.8 million, and that's called a bond anticipation note. So that's 68% of the total debt that Union Township has. So 20, so 68% of all of our debt is refinanced every year as a short-term note. However, what I learned from the good people at Bradley Payne is there's more to the story and a lot more to the story. So this is actually a complicated bond product that we have. It dates back to, I think, when Doug Walter was, was the, was the administrator. And so it is a derivative. And, you know, so I'm getting into areas that are not my expertise. I, you know, start talking derivatives. So the derivative is an interest rate swap. So, you know, kind of talking in high level, oversimplifying and kind of trying to put things in bumper sticker style language is, even though it's a short-term note, to us, it is fixed at 3.9%. So that's not the whole story, because there's something called a true-up that's involved. But generally, our cost, although, again, there's a true-up that could, that, you know, I'm not sure how many hundreds of thousands that could be. But in addition to 3.9, so that bond is something that we don't have to really worry about in terms of the immediate short-term rates that the Fed is going to be put in place or as they, as they crank up the rates. However, so I asked the question, okay, so at what point do rates go up high enough that this becomes an issue or something we need to be looking at paying off or doing something about? And he said, well, you need to be watching the LIBOR rate. I thought, ah, that's something I know something about. I worked at Provenant Bank, I worked with LIBOR rates. So LIBOR, what's LIBOR? London Interbank Offertory Rate. That's an international bank, international benchmark. It, that, it's an average interest rate that's derived from banks loaning money to each other, just kind of speaking about it generally. So if the LIBOR rate were to get up to 3.9% or in the vicinity of the rate that we're paying on as bond, and a LIBOR rate's currently at 1.35, I think it is, 1.38, I think, was today's rate. And that's the 52-point, or the 52-week range on, on LIBOR is, I think it was .22 up to 1.39. So if that rate gets to like 3.9, then we're going to have some decisions to make. So on that particular debt instrument, my recommendation to the board is, at this point, do nothing? Because I was concerned, you know, is this something we're going to want to pay off, refinance? I would say no. What I want to do is watch the LIBOR rates, and I want to, and I want to have an annual meeting with this gentleman who works for Bradley Payne and, and get a update on our, on all of our debts. Let's go to the next slide, Cory. So this next slide, yeah, you guys can't read that at all. So then, so again, it's going to be on the website. So the next slide, that is just a amortization schedule of all of our debts combined. So that first column, it starts with the Civic Center debt, that's a van, a bond anticipation note, $22.8 million. And that gets paid off at 2032. So I got all of the other debts lined up in the different columns, and that last column is, is the total balance. Go to the next slide. Then that is easier to see, the classic hockey stick. So that's just saying our total debt, again, so that's just the, the previous slide in, in graphical format. That's just the total debt, how it drops off down to the year with a 2033.
2033.
Three. And it drops down to $2 million from its current level of $34 million. Next slide. Next slide, this is a principal and interest schedule. So this would be the equivalent, if you were, you know, if you had half a dozen houses that you owned or, or half a dozen investment properties, and you wanted to look at all your principal and interest expense on one page, that's what this is. And, and the, and the total debt service is at the end. Next, next chart. And then this is the last one I have. Then, and you can see again at 2033, this is where, you know, it, it, it drops off. So this is our total debt servicing. The blue line is the principal, the goldish rust-colored line is the interest. And you can see after 2033, getting into 2034, it's much more predictable, what you see similar to a home mortgage of increasing principal year-to-year to decreasing interest. And with that, gentlemen, any questions for me?
I appreciate you digging in on that, Mr. Becker. And what I take away from that is watch the LIBOR rate and, and have that annual meeting. And also would, would enjoy that as well. I see that it specifically kind of ties into what you're, what you're digging out there to, to find answers on, is something that ties directly to, you know, hear me, may, may hear me say frequently enough, that's about launching an annual strategic plan and then also launching for the first time a township administrator's operating budget, because a township administrator's operating budget can at least take what you're saying and put that into the kind of those bumper sticker elements of information to say, this is what's, this is what's going on. So don't have to go climb down deep into the hole. Now, you can always do that annually and quarterly. But I know that the residents, as a service to the residents, I think it's very valuable to be able to have that strategic plan, get the input and engagement from the residents, but at the same rate, tie that up with the township administrator's operating budget. And I think that's what we, what we get to. So I think it's great having a benchmark for the LIBOR rate. So, Mr. Dills?
Mr. Becker, you put a lot of work into that. Yeah, appreciate you having that meeting as well. So very much, yeah, thank you.
Well, this is an area I was, you know, focused on and concerned about. And, you know, after, the more I learned, the more comfortable I was. And, and so just having an understanding of it, no, you know, this doesn't have to keep me awake at night anymore.
Yep.
So just having the understanding of kind of where we are and the potential for, for, you know, piles as we move forward with, with the debt and the interest rates. You know, I mean, it is, it was what it is. We can't change the past. It's just a matter of what do we do with what we have today? And, and I think, you know, there's really, it just needs to be watched. And, and again, the key thing to be watching going forward is simply LIBOR rates.
That's good. That's great.
So to be clear about this, our debt service for this year is, is $3,451,827.
Thanks, Ron. All right, thank you, Mr. Becker. And we'll, interested to keep moving on with the agenda tonight. We packed a full one. Item H, Appointment of Interim Township Administrator effective 3/12 through 3/27. effective three-twelve through three-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Gentlemen, this is an item I asked to, to have on the agenda. Uh, the Higher Vice Code puts the, uh, authority with the chairman, uh, to at least nominate and put that forward. Uh, so, um, I wanna share my background thoughts and process with this. Um, I reached out to our individual department heads, uh, to gauge their interests and their capacity and bandwidth, uh, to be able to, um, fulfill this role. And all three, um, you know, said that they'll absolutely serve and, and, you know, do, do this, uh, for the team and for Union Township. Um, and it was, it's very well-known, the fire department's very flat, and the service department's very flat, uh, so as far as capacity-wise, they're, uh, so leaving with the police department and, and Chief Gaviglia, um, who, uh, is someone that is, as our department head, you know, very, very interested in, uh, the administrative, uh, office in that position. Um, and I think it's something to add to, uh, the chief's background, to, to give him a breadth and depth of, of new experiences in the interim administrator role. And he's got strong support from Chief Dialling and, and, and Mr. Taylor. Um, and, um, you know, with that, I think, you know, you, you all know his personal background, his professional background, he's the busiest cop here in Union Township, uh, when he was on the patrol. Uh, he's masters in business and, and, and public, uh, affairs as well, or public administration as well. So, um, you know, it's one of those things, I think, as the chief starts to get, uh, even closer towards the end of potentially the law enforcement career, it's looking at what's on that future horizon, what those next steps may be. So again, I think it's always great to be able to build into your people. Um, and, uh, that's, that's, that's importance of a good leader, there is able to develop people that they're able to move on and go other locations. You don't, you don't necessarily want them to, to move on and go other locations, but, uh, but we wanna give them those opportunities. So with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to appoint, um, Chief Gaviglia as the township, interim township administrator effective of March twelfth, twenty-twenty-two through March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from, from, from you, gentlemen?
Uh, yeah, I, um, I spoke to Chief Gaviglia, uh, early this afternoon on, on this, and just wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, he was, uh, really wanting to do this, as opposed to having a, a gun to his head, uh, saying, you know, nobody else will do it, chief, it's, it's all yours. Uh, you know, so we, and he and I had a nice chat, and uh, he does have ambitions to be, uh, an administrator, uh, maybe in Union Township someday, maybe in a different township. So that being the case, being the interim administrator is a golden opportunity. So he's the right guy for the right job at the right time, and uh, uh, I got my, uh, full faith and confidence in Chief Gaviglia.
Uh, chief, thanks for stepping up and helping the township out. Appreciate you very much. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I think, um, even recognizing the administrator search recently as well, there are, there's going to be a litany of administrative positions opening up. So it's, it's a good time to be, uh, having that breadth and depth of experience, and, um, and, uh, it's a good time to be an administrator, right? And bad, bad time to be, be in government, so, uh, because it's, it's a constricted marketplace. So, um, all right, we'll close discussion, and, uh, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
We need a motion, right?
Uh, yes, we have the motion, it was seconded, and so we'll go to roll call.
Sorry, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Um, item I, Appointment of Interim Township Zoning Director effective March twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, gentlemen, so we'll entertain a motion. Um, let me just have a brief introduction. Craig Floudy has been the, um, currently a planner for Union Township, and Craig graduated from the University of Cincinnati with a bachelor degree in urban planning. Uh, before completing his degree, Craig completed two internships with Union Township, starting in August two thousand sixteen, continued working part-time with the township through school. Uh, upon graduation, Craig started a full-time position with the Union Township in April two thousand nineteen. Since then, Craig has, has continued to grow skills and knowledge, uh, with the field of urban planning and beyond, um, and based on his experiences acquired, you know, during that time at Union Township. So, uh, there's really, with that vacancy in that position, um, you know, that, you know, Craig is, is definitely the person that I know we can count on and, and be able to fill the seat here at the Diaz, and be able to provide us that subject matter expertise. I think, as, as I understand it now, he's already, uh, doing, uh, a majority of, of the legwork. But at that, I'll, I'll ask for the motion and open up the discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, gentlemen. Open the floor.
Craig, thanks for stepping up very much, and, uh, excited to work with you more. And you were coached and trained by a good one, Mr. Wright, so I'm confident in you, absolutely. So I appreciate you again, thank you very much.
Yeah, I share that, uh, confidence. Uh, you know, he, he's, uh, he's been doing the job, uh, as a, our planner, all, all along, and, uh, you know, stepping up to be interim. I think that, uh, will help him to lead to bigger, better things, uh, someday in his career, at least I hope so.
Well, absolutely. You've got, you've got our, our, uh, support and confidence in you, Craig, so, uh, looking forward to, to bright things ahead for you. Um, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Craig.
Thanks, Greg.
We'll see you here soon. All right, we'll move along. Item J, gentlemen, we're asked to, uh, uh, motion to approve the Union Township Natural Gas Aggregation Program. Uh, this motion is to authorize the township administrator, interim township administrator, is applicable to enter into nat, natural gas aggregation agreement with a natural gas supplier recommended by Energy Alliances, the community's energy aggregation consultant, for a price not to exceed fifty-six cents per CCF for a term not to exceed twenty-four months commencing in June of twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
None.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
No, okay. Okay. Uh, yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item K, Union Township Electricity Aggregation Program. Gentlemen, uh, mo, we're pursuing a motion to authorize the township administrator and interim township administrator is applicable to inform Energy Alliances, Inc., of the township's intent to allow the current DynaG electricity supply contract to expire and to otherwise take any action necessary to shift customers back to Duke Energy for electricity supply. And, Mr. Wright, do you, uh, well, in motion, and then we'll enter discussion on that?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All right, and we'll open that for discussion, and I know, Mr. Wright, you, you've may have some background on, on that course right now.
Yeah, so, uh, and thank you for the authorization on the natural gas. Natural gas has been the more predictable, uh, as you know, the township has electric, uh, electric aggregation and natural gas aggregation programs that were put in place for the voters at the end of two thousand fifteen. Um, one of the issues that's come up with volatility in the energy markets is Duke Energy's, uh, uh, the, the natural gas we were able to secure a price on, but on the electric, um, the electric rates expire, um, in June. And so Duke's price to compare for June twenty-twenty-two through May of twenty-twenty-three is not gonna be available until late May. Um, the Energy Alliances does a lot of competitive bidding and pricing on this to try and price, uh, supply contracts that are generally in the upper-third of the competitive range of the market, and that, by that, I mean, by, you know, they're the best top-third of all the rates that are available on the price to compare. Uh, and, and they never provide a termination. So, uh, if customers decide they don't wanna do aggregation, they don't pay fees, the, the contracts are broken. But the issue is, uh, locking a rate in right now is not beneficial to our residents, because it's entirely possible, based on speculation, that you could lock in a supply contract that's actually higher than Duke Energy's, um, price to compare, uh, particularly with the energy market, you're basically playing roulette with the energy market right now. And so, um, after some significant conversation with, with these guys, uh, basically recommending that we would shift the electricity consumers back to Duke Energy. So instead of seeing a, a, a two-part bill that shows a, uh, distribution charge and then a supply charge, you're gonna see a distribution charge and then, uh, basically a compilation rate, which will consist of the Duke Energy standard riders. So that way, um, uh, the consumers will be shifted onto market rates, as opposed to playing roulette in the electric market right now without that price. And as I understand it, uh, in the event that they get the pricing back from Duke, uh, Energy Alliances can move very quickly to then re-establish an aggregation program with, if we're able to secure a better rate for our consumers. So they, so they can shift over when the DynaG rate expires back to Duke Energy, which then people will, you know, they'll be, they're gonna be paying Duke Energy rates. Uh, and, and I've been told there is gonna be some sticker shock because of the volatility in the market regardless, but they're gonna be paying the Duke Energy standard non-aggregation rate, and then they'll be able to, uh, maybe the prices will come down, hopefully things globally, political, you know, geopolitics settle down, I don't know, I, I'm not real hopeful, uh, in the volatility in the market right now, but, um, um, they could be very responsive and start the program back up with another opt-in, or opt, opt-out notice to the, to the customers, uh, basically fire the program back up at a moment's notice, and then get that implemented in about forty-five days.
Okay.
Great, thank you for that recap, Mr. Wright. Gentlemen, any further?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, again, with all due diligence on this, I reached out to Pat Mauley, he's the owner of Midwest Utilities. He's a, an expert and specializes in utility rates such as gas and electric. Bounced it off him, we had some emails exchanged back and forth, and what it comes down to is one word, volatility. Uh, he absolutely agreed with this, uh, recommendation, and he put it to me this way, he says, you know, with gasoline at four dollars a gallon, how would you feel about, you know, a long-term contract on the price of gasoline? Made sense to me, so I'm okay.
See, I'll, I'll say this, um, I, I guess I must have threw it away or something, 'cause, um, I, I didn't even know that, 'cause my Duke Energy bill's set up on auto pay, right, or whatever, so. I didn't even know we switched over to, uh, DynaG, was it a couple years ago?
The energy aggregation.
Yeah, you know, and so, uh, and then I got a, a debit card in the mail for, like, a reimbursement for like five dollars and thirty-three cents, and I'm thinking to myself, probably costs more in postage and the paper and the card to mail this out than what my, you know, and so I, I had a lot of, um, residents asking me what this was about, and Mr. Wright did a good job explaining it to me. But if we do go back to DynaG, um, and, you know, Ms. Ayers, this would probably be more for you when you're, when you're in this role, is, uh, I, I think we, 'cause I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember the letter when it was sent out. I, I assume it was probably junk mail, I don't know. So, um, uh, we, we gotta do a better job as a township to just inform the residents what we're doing, um, because I, I didn't even know, I didn't even know, I just, you know, so, for what it's worth, and I'm, you know, so.
It, so the DynaG rebate program, um, the, to say that, uh, we, we didn't blast DynaG for the way that that was communicated is an understatement. That was, they did an absolutely horrible job. Uh, just for full disclosure, the township did not expend any money in that, that came entirely from DynaG. DynaG sent out rebate cards to aggregation customers. I think the smallest rebates were three to five cents, the largest ones could be ten or twelve dollars. But DynaG's perspective was that, uh, that they would allow the consumer the opportunity to choose whether to get their rebate. Um, they, I, I actually relayed my concerns through Energy Alliance to DynaG. I said, you know, the reality is with this rebate program, there should have been an initial communication. All opt-out communication, all aggregation stuff comes with a township logo on it. It will say, uh, Union Township Aggregation on it. Do not throw that away, it is not junk mail, you need to open it, you need to read it, you need to make a decision proactively. Um, we did tell them that, you know, they should have sent an initial communication out to inform people that the rebate cards were coming, and then they would expect this prepaid debit card and know what it was, instead of just looking at it. If you're like me, you open it, you just grab the card, you don't really, I never read, and that's probably your fault, I never read anything that comes to me at the house. So, uh, lesson learned, read, read the paperwork, but the other lesson is communicate better, uh, and we certainly let DynaG know that. And so, um, in talking with Energy Alliance, and again, Ms. Ayers will be able to, to engage them, a, and I'll have some, some more conversations with them this week, what this process looks like as these accounts, as they expire, and they just get shifted back over to Duke Energy, that, as I understand, that's seamless, but then if the program were to fire back up, you know, we go back to an opt-out, I, I would assume that everybody's now back on Duke Energy rates, then everybody's gonna get a new opt-out letter if there is a new aggregation rate that's pursued. So, um, open it, open it, read it, make your decision, opt-out, you can do it by phone, you can do it, um, uh, on, I think on the internet, or you can mail in the form. They're very responsive by phone. And then the township maintains a webpage regarding aggregation, current rates, all of those things. We'll get that updated, uh, based upon, you know, further, we can update the natural gas soon, but, uh, you know, when the, when the rates go off, we could just have the advisement that you're now on a Duke Energy rate, you're on market rates, and, uh, you're welcome to go secure your own supply contract. But I would caution people when they do that outside of the aggregation program, that they don't always get notices, and read the fine print, because there is, uh, you know, termination fees-
Yeah.
-and other things. So just be careful and know what you're doing when you venture out on the, uh, private electricity market. So that's, that's the parting advice I would-
Yeah, appreciate that. Do you, do you know when the contract is set to expire?
Through June, through, through June, yep.
So, and so basically, is, is it automatic, they'll automatically go back to Duke?
They'll shift it back over to Duke, yeah. It just depends on, there's like billing tranches, uh, if that makes sense, like, there's big group billings, the way Duke handles that. So there'll be a big segment that falls off, and then another segment that falls off, so.
Fair enough, okay.
Uh, thanks, thank you for explaining that, and great questions. Uh, Mr. Dills, uh, also brought, I brought that sentiment up, so you're aware, I attended the High Township Association Conference, uh, back in January, uh, and that was one of the other, the great areas to be able to collaborate, was speaking with Energy Alliances, and I voiced the concern there, that the communication needs to be better, 'cause I've heard those questions often from residents, and you can go on any social media page or whatever, you know, my wife was sharing with me that, that, you know, a lot of households were having that concern, they thought that they're, you know, uh, being charged more now, and then, is it a scam with the rebate card? So that's, that's what I put forward, is that we've gotta have a better way to communicate and deliver this. And yes, part, that is, you know, the partnership and, on Energy Alliances, and the same rate, we're the ones that are ultimately responsible at the end of the day. So I, I view it as also part of the opportunity for looking at where can we add some additional professional communications resources to the overall services that, that all, everything that Union Township delivers to the residents. Uh, so an area that we can, we can assist and help, and, and make the complex cases more simple and digestible, and make our residents informed. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, a question. So, Mr. Wright, you, you mentioned, uh, opt-out a number of times, why not opt-in?
Aggregation by its very nature is an opt-out program. The township prior to aggregation had an opt-in program, and the voters voted for aggregation on an opt-out basis.
Okay.
So that's why we do it the way we do it.
Makes sense.
So does, does there come, does there come a time where if there was enough, um, citizen engagement that gave a different direction on that, that you would, you would put something back on the ballot to change that?
Uh, you know, Mr. Logue, I'm not an attorney, uh, and, uh, I think that's a great question for the law director, and, and, you know, a great question for Energy Alliances-
Okay.
...to determine how to unwind aggregation if there was enough citizen engagement. I would imagine there's probably, I don't, I don't even need to speculate how you do that.
Okay. Uh, I know that they, they get a benefit out of it, traditionally, as it's utilized, but again, we've, we just, as a collective approach, have to communicate better. Um, all right, so with that, I'll close discussion, gentlemen, and roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, we're gonna move to item eleven before I introduce the first resolution. I do wanna just make a comment, as we've moved through, um, you know, all the, all the items above for approval, um, I definitely want to, uh, look at changes in the future that would be, um, pursuant to consent agenda, and, and essentially, all the items that we just discussed and went through, we did a roll call vote on every single item. There, you know, I don't think that we had a no vote on that. Um, so consent agenda allows you to package it essentially all, so it's a one roll call vote. Now, if we want to pull an item out and vote separately on it, we can pull it out and vote separately on it, but the agenda would be packaged basically as a consent agenda. So a roll call vote will save a lot of time, be more efficient and effective with that, probably limit Mr. Campbell from having to, to capture all of our yeses, uh, repeatedly. So, uh, it's just something I want, as, as time, you know, I wanna give everyone time to, to, to move forward here with, uh, the changes that are coming, but, um, uh, that's just something I wanna put on your radar, as far as, uh, when, when we think that, you know, the agenda may be presented in that manner, um, that'll be a, a new welcome change, I believe. So with that, I'll move forward to item, uh, L, and Resolution twenty-twenty-two, which is the amended twenty-twenty-two Permanent Appropriations Resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-two, approving the amended twenty-twenty-two Permanent Appropriations Resolution for Union Township? 2022 appropriations resolution for Union Township?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Call a roll, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, Resolution 2022-12, Resolution Regarding Local Government Fund, Alternative Method. This is to adopt the resolution authorizing the adoption of alternative methods for proportionate, apportionment of the undivided local government fund for county year 2023 that per Ohio Vice Code, Section 574.7.53, excludes approval otherwise required of legislative authority of the city located wholly or partially in the county with the greatest population. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, I will just state this, gentlemen, the County Township Association, at the last meeting, there was a motion able to carry forward for all the townships to begin to pass this resolution as written, and the draft was put out there because all the townships have to pass the same resolution basically for it to carry forward to the county, for the county to be able to pass. Now, the Township Association does want to engage and give the continued opportunity for cities and villages to engage, if they wanted to make any changes to the formula, frankly, this is the same formula, it's been repeated for the last two years now, so that conversation should just really continue throughout the year if there is going to be an engagement. But the Township Association did send out an email message asking to hold off on passing the resolution until April, but then we kind of get into a hurry up and wait, and I'm going to take, you know, I wanted to have you guys informed, but at the same rate, take the initiative here that if it's something that we can go ahead and get approved at this point in time, now if the Township Association changes the formula, or something comes of the villages and the cities, we will be asked to pass a new resolution, and we'll handle that at that time, but, so that's where we're at with this. So if there's no questions for me on that, then, Mr. Becker, yes?
Well, I just wanted to make a quick comment, so the local government fund, that's a line item in the state budget where they, the state sends money to the local townships and municipalities, so, you know, it's a revenue source, you know, for, you know, all of the local governments. So, you know, there's a formula, and then there's an alternate formula, and the current formula we've been using since the beginning of time, I don't think anybody could figure out how that ever was put together, so I think our commissioners have been taking the ball with us to come up with a more equitable formula, so that's what this is about.
Hey, yeah, great point on that, that was something where the towns, the cities and villages were getting the lion's share of the local government fund, and as that flows, it's $2 million a year roughly, whereas 47% or so goes to the county, and then the other 25% is equally distributed across the 24, I won't say what the number is there, but villages, townships, municipalities, and then the remaining 75% is based off of population for Union Township being larger population, that attributes about $250,000 of revenue that comes from that local government fund. And I do want to go ahead and attribute this because I believe Commissioner Painter really took the lead on getting that local government fund, the new formula identified, and it's been something that has been very fair and reasonable for, if you just look at a township and their size and compare it to a township, or the cities and municipalities of a population size, and you see what the dollars come in at. So, it's been about the best thing that does move forward, and it kind of rebalanced things, so it wasn't just the lion's share going to the city of Milford and when their population's much less than Union Township. So, I'll say thank you, Commissioner Painter, see you nod in your head, yes, so thank you for the support with that. And I know that the commissioner's office takes that other million dollars, and they basically put that into their safety services and their communications and dispatch centers to provide kind of the total of government support services for the county, so.
They fill a lot of our potholes.
We'll keep him on the hooks for that, because we do have our communications and dispatch office, but we'll keep him on the hook for our roads, he's been fixing the roads, so thank you. All right, then we'll roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, Resolution 2022-13, Resolution Regarding Non-Bargaining Unit Employee Wages, to adopt regarding the employee wages for non-bargaining unit employees in Union Township, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Becker?
No, I just, I did have a discussion with Mr. Wright on that today, so I was going over the detail on it, and it made sense the way he had it structured out, I'm okay with it.
All right, great, gentlemen. This would be great to equalize and balance some things up for the non-bargaining unit employees, so, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-14, Resolution Authorizing the Grant Application for Claremont County Parks Grant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Call a roll, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-15, Nuisance Abatement Resolution, this, do I have a motion to adopt 2022-15, authorizing abatement, removal of vegetation, noxious weeds, garbage, trash, and debris pursuant to Section 505.87 of the Ohio Vice Code at the following property, 4498 Schoolhouse Road, Batavia, Ohio 45103.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Becker.
So once again, doing due diligence, I did a drive-by to look at the house, and yeah, it's a mess, it's a dump, and, I mean, it's so bad. As I was leaving the area, I actually drove down, turned around, drove back, and I was like, wow. And, you know, driving home, I got thinking, I've driven a lot of miles, a lot of miles around the state of Ohio, and I have never, never seen the state of Ohio a dump like we have over on Schoolhouse Road. Now, I'm not the most observant guy in the world, I've probably driven past a million of them, just never noticed, but when I was driving past this place, I, good grief. So, yeah, my compliments to our planning zoning department, particularly our inspector for being on top of this, calling it out, and, you know, there's a legal process that we have to, there's hoops we have to jump through to get to the point where we're going to go clean it up and charge them for it, and it appears that we're at this point, and, you know, at some point, you got to do what needs to be done, and we're there.
It's amazing to own a piece of property and not take care of it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Burkey, if you are watching.
He told me he watches every meeting, so, yeah, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Burkey, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, just, he's one of the successes behind the scenes here, and we greatly appreciate what you do. So, gentlemen, with that, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, enter comments from the board members, I'll kick us off here. The press release hit, what, a week and a half, two weeks ago on TQL, this is their largest expansion to date, 160,000 square feet, 1,000 new employees, it's going to be, it's just great to continue to see that partnership, you know, I've had, you know, we recently, like I said, in the month of January, we had Treasurer Sprague in town and visited with Kerry Byrne and TQL, and we just, we continue to do what the community and what business owners have asked us to do, you know, collaborate with the county, collaborate with the state, and just have, you know, an effective approach moving forward. And just huge congratulations to TQL on their partnership and all the wonderful people working there, and that high culture, you know, organization that they have, and we're fortunate to be partnered with them and continue that partnership that they accelerated this program because they did not need to, and they could choose to go to any of the 50 states all over the country at a whim and a stroke of a pen to be able to plus up their numbers at multiple sites all over, so, so it's a big benefit. Last week, I had, well, I had rescheduled previous meetings due to the birth of our daughter, but I was able to walk through West Claremont with Natasha Adams, I had opened up the opportunity in January, also with the school board, but I was able to meet with Natasha Adams, walk through, see how their floor plan is laid out, I've actually never been on that side of the building, I would welcome both of you gentlemen to see that and see the floor plan. They pack a lot of people and a lot of resources into that side of the building, I'm often thinking on this side of the building, what additional utilization can we get out of it? If anyone's ever looked in through the doors or walked through, they see a lot of big, open, wide spaces, so, you know, I feel like that's taxpayer dollars where we can get better utilization out of, so I'm open for ideas. But it was a great conversation about the future, about strategy and being aligned, and collaborative effort in which, you know, they're doing some great stuff right now with engaging other communities, I keep telling Natasha Adams that, you know, that what they've done with the strategic plan, what they've done with the state of the schools, that's something that the township here has kind of lagged in for a number of years, and, you know, looking to see the way that she kind of leads that effort forward, and what we can learn from those lessons there from what they're doing. I also walked her through our side of the building, and it was the very first time she's ever seen our gym, was surprised that we had one, the locker room, and the basketball gym. So I said, please keep that in mind for future collaboration events, because we want to be able to get more utilization out of this, because again, a vibrant civic center says a lot about the community, and we want to open those doors. Last week, I believe it was, I sat with Congressman Winstrip and local police down at Cincinnati Police Department, some of my close relationships with the Cincinnati Police Department operate and run what's called a military liaison group, and they're receiving some national recognition right now for being incorporated into federal funding bills and state bills, we met with Cindy Abrams as well, they're looking at what we can do at the state level, but as a method to be able to provide more police funding at our local levels, take some of the requirements off of the local police. And with that, I want to plug really fast, Mr., or Chief Aviglia, I did a ride-along last Sunday with Lieutenant Reese, and it was, it was just incredible, and at the same rate, you know, I've recognized what I mentioned earlier, I definitely want to at least have us begin to pull some data and some quotes anyway for what's going on with the bathroom situation, the police department, because the officers really don't have a dedicated bathroom, that they're not also using with offenders that come in, as you're well aware, you know that. And then I'm also very supportive of, I learned of the FAT system and the Milo's training, that would be fantastic to be able to get that training system up for the officer, so a little bit of research into that, again, as the departments start to push their budgets up instead of just the board and the administrator pushing down what you will get, these are the resources where the rubber meets the road we need to be aware of. And with that, I'll highlight in some, any research into the Attorney General's grant for ballistic vests, I know we already utilize a grant right now, but there, I at least want to know the application of being able to utilize this grant, that as my understanding is, we'll pay for 90% of our vests, and we have to cycle those out every five years, and at the same rate, that creates some flexibility if we want to make some changes with the vests between their overall nature, emblazon Union Township PD in the back so that they're more visible at night for cars, or even change the color, it's all open discussion to be able to have. And continue on here, I do continue to hear positive feedback from employees that are very thankful for the addition of a membership to Cincinnati Nature Center for our employee wellness plan. As you gentlemen know, with soaring healthcare prices, wellness plans have been more important than ever in keeping our employees healthy, both mentally and physically, and it's something that we saw during COVID as well for everybody, and it's a great community asset that we have that brings 270,000 visitors a year through that business in our township, so it's being a good partner with our business to also be able to deploy a employee wellness plan, that's just been greatly received, and that goes to the sentiment that you shared earlier, Mr. Dills, that, you know, I feel valued, I've been here for 25 years, and, you know, I feel valued now, I don't just feel like a number, so, that's, that goes a long way. And very similar to, you know, probably the benefit that, like you said, you throw out the DynaG card, you didn't know what that rebate was, well, you guys have heard me share the story about the Air Medical Services, it's about a $15,000 cost for all the employees to have an Air Medical Service Card, and I'd never received any information on that, so when the mail came to me for the Air Medical Service Card, I thought it was junk mail and threw it away as well, at my personal house, but a great employee benefit package as well. So, and lastly, gentlemen, I attended the OKI meeting earlier in February, where Commissioner Painter is actually the president of OKI right now, and OKI will have nearly $60 million to invest this upcoming year, and OKI is a great place for us to be able to, again, know what's going on in the regional council of governments and where we can be an impact for that, just like the Iquels Road where OKI sent $5 million over to fund that, the roundabouts, and then the county supported $2 million to finish those off and fully fund the project. I don't think we've ever had a better collaboration with the county, so thank you for sending me to OKI to represent the board, and I'll do what I can to continue to represent us while there and bring information back as well. So, with that, I'll just close my remarks and give you the floor, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Just a couple of things, you got to give credit where credit's due, and I want to thank the previous Board of Trustees, they're the ones that locked in the deal with TQL, that secured that up at the end of the year, and then Mr. Logue, you were a part of that, and our two previous trustees as well, and Mr. Geis is a part of that, so I want to give them credit for that, and then Mr. Wright taking over the finish line as well, so appreciate you for that. We attended a good ribbon-cutting ceremony for Honor Bind Senior Life last week, and appreciate the invite and the partnership, Mr. Painter and along with the other commissioners were there, and we love the Claremont Chamber of Commerce and making sure we have a relationship with them, and that, it was a very nice facility, very nice, so, yeah, wish them many success. I would just want to encourage again, any residents to apply for the Parks and Recreations Committee, I can't stress that enough, I really want folks' opinions on the way our parks should look in the future, and so I'd like to have a nice board to basically be boots on the ground to let us know what they do and don't want. And it's funny, I don't know, Mr. Becker, if he's reached out to you, but Lieutenant Reese reached out to me as well to do a ride-along, and so I've got that scheduled later this month, it'll be an evening ride, so, I don't know, Friday night, evening ride, maybe we'll get some action, but Chief Daimling, if, you know, with your blessing, maybe soon enough I can be able to hang out with one of the fires, firehouses, and whichever one you recommend, and just get more hands on. But lastly, Ms. Ayers, I'm excited to work with you, so appreciate you very much, it's great that your whole family came out, and I'm excited to shake their hand at the end, so excited to work with you. Mr. Wright, best of luck in all your endeavors, my friend, and we will continue to be friends, and I'm sure you'll hear more from me, so appreciate you very much, sir. God bless you, brother, thank you.
So, I want to talk a little bit about, oh, God, how we got to where we are tonight with the administrator. So, first off, throughout January and February, we've had multiple executive sessions, multiple hours, and that's fine, I'm not complaining. What I'm pointing out is, every one of those, every one of them, was because our previous administrator resigned. Had he not resigned, and that's okay, he did, but had he not resigned, we wouldn't have had any executive session, zero. Now, we're going to have one tonight on a new topic, but this will be the first executive session we had, that we have tonight, would be the first one we had, wasn't related to the former administrator leaving. I also got thinking, you know, I named 11 jobs our new administrator is doing, I did think of a 12th one, I don't know why I didn't leave with this one, Economic Development Director, I think I left that one off the list, there's probably still more, but if I keep thinking about those. And also, I just want to talk a little bit more about the process, so, and, you know, we've covered kind of parts of this, I guess earlier in the meeting. So, of course, you know, when Mr. Geis resigned, you know, we come, we came in first of the year, Mr. Wright's the interim administrator, so, and we're still, you know, at least two of us here, trying to kind of figure our way around, we've never been trustees before, and Mr. Logue's done a great job, Chairman Logue leading us, and so, and we're getting to know Mr. Wright and working with him, and he's taken the lead and taken the ball and running with it and doing a great job, and showing us what to do, and the do's and don'ts, and also working with our fiscal officer and all this stuff. So, my expectation, and I think my colleagues up here agree with this, is that we were going to move Mr. Wright into the administrator position. So then, then he was going to backfill his position, so it was just a matter of hammering out those details and getting it done, while we just didn't get there. So then we find out, Mr. Wright is leaving, again, you know, good for him, that's, you know, opportunity, I would have, I'd take the opportunity too if it'd been there. So now, all of a sudden, we're in panic mode. So now, we don't have an administrator, and our assistant administrator is leaving, it's like, oh crap, what do we do now? So, you know, so we start scrambling and putting feelers out, and I'm calling people I know, and the other board members calling people they know, and saying who would be available or interested in applying for the job. So, for one week, we had it open, and one week's not, you know, a big timeframe, to get resumes in, and we got a dozen. We looked over every one of those, we looked over every one of those resumes, we interviewed seven people, we just sent, each of us just sent names to our law director who arranged the interviews, and then of those seven we interviewed, we had a, we actually had a split at one point, where it was, each one of us had a separate person, a different person, it was a three-way split. It was a three, a three-way split on who, who we thought was the best person. After a second round of interviews, then it became clear to us who the best person was. And then the administrator, you know, worked with the law director to then work on a contract, hence commencing tonight. So I just really wanted to, been wanting to kind of tell the story and I hope it didn't tell too much. But that's basically, you know, the whole process of what we went through and how we got to where we are today.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll plug just two things and that's off the back of both of your comments there and then I'll hit our upcoming events and take our next executive session motion. So I'll just go in sequential order here. You're right, Mr. Dills, with the, at least the transition of having a land deal as a letter of interest brought to the board. And that was something that took place in executive session, several executive sessions during 2021. However, the ability to execute and move forward, because that was a wide open window that was outwards of 10 years. So to be able to move forward and have that confidence, to be able to execute and move forward is significant on this board as well. And at the same rate, I did clear, Mr. Commissioner Painter had shared with me long, long ago and again and again, a TQL expansion story that illustrates the power of planned economic development. And so credit where credit's due, none of that would have happened without the Claremont County Community Investment Corporation and being able to put $8 million into making that happen at Ivy Point Park in the very first place. And then also being able to roll the funds basically that were made out of that into the Jungle Gyms development. And the story illustrates what happened. And I will just elaborate further on that from an aspect of credibility and anyone that has a question or bias, I shared this story directly with the former administrator, Mr. Geis, and asked for his comment, edit, whatever it may be, if he disagreed with it. And he did not have concerns with it and did not provide edits with it because I said, I will take your fight to the county and anywhere else if this is misinformation because I want to accurately represent to the community what is going on. And it was left with no concerns. And there we go. So I think that that's rather final. So it's a collaboration that the township has had through and through, and that's what's going to elevate us onward and upward to the next place that we go. Mr. Becker, to point, the only thing that still stands out with me is panic mode. I couldn't panic. You know, look, you guys have all heard it, but you know, whatever you may name it, but literally I was on the phone call with Cory, talking to him about some things I'd like to, like to do with him and his future. And I was holding the baby carrier because we were literally 6:30 PM checking out of the hospital and having that initial conversation. So there was a flurry of activity, but priorities take place. And the one thing that I knew as I'm going home with my, you know, newest baby and family is this is a great organization, a great place. And what I have told the previous board when I was able to, it's on this board. You know, I'm not concerned of, you know, when there are vacancies because you got to look in the mirror if you don't get anybody because it's on this board. And I think that's a test attributable to this board to be able to secure the 12-plus applications and to be, you know, successful. And that's just, look, I'm optimistic about everything. It's, 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 it's an open slate and we got great, you know, we got great people with great talents and their minds and hearts in the right place and we're going to give them the authority to, to execute and lead. And, you know, that's just setting great culture. And, you know, so I'm optimistic of every challenge that comes our way. So appreciate and I totally understand if panic can be the world or not, but flurry of activity, right? I mean, you know, you've heard, you've heard my sniper shot, you know, story I'm sure before with that and the 500 pound bombs and the, the machine guns going and that's a flurry of activity. But you know, you just, you, you go to your level of training. When you, when you get in those situations, it's, you follow the level of your training and there's trained professionals up here, so.
I do a follow-up thought.
Yes.
If that's okay.
Yes, of course.
So, you know, I guess another thing, it's an important piece, a component of all of this that nobody would know unless you were in executive session with us. The three of us were very different. We have different priorities, different ideals, different styles, and we worked together very well. I mean, we had different opinions, you know, we respected each other's opinions, we listened, we debated. And yeah, I think at one point I pounded my fist on the table, making a point about something, I don't remember what it was. But yeah, we got animated, weren't exactly hollering back and forth with each other or anything, but we, we had, we had a really good debate and pros and cons and, and, you know, we were a stalemate a couple of times and, and eventually we came to a conclusion. And that was just an awesome process the whole way around.
Thanks for that comment. We won't go back and forth, okay, I promise. But to me, look, it just goes on the onus of the importance of transition plans. Military man by nature, trade, you know, experience of being in continuity of operations, one thing that I harped on for the last two years was a transition plan. I did not get the support for it. That's why we're left in the position that we're left in. And, and that's fine because again, we're going to adapt and overcome and do what we can do. But the one thing I was able to do was to get the support from the staff and that was an initial conversation with Mr. Geis too, to at least say, it's a great idea for December 17th to have an on, an immersion briefing for the board. And it's those abilities that, you know, person to person, I may be able to get to know you a little bit better and person to person, I may be able to, that's high culture. And that's what's impactful. And so that's why you can come with these challenges and we can, we can have, you know, we can agree and disagree without being disagreeable because we have a person to person relationship and a respect for each other. And that's extremely beneficial for a board and as, as a, from a chairman perspective, that's what I'm always thinking about is the cohesion on the board and how can we continue to, you know, mature that so you don't lose that. And I put a lot of it on the administrator. If you don't have a cohesive board, you look straight at the administrator. I mean, that is their position, that is their, their role. So I do set a high standard for you, Ms. Susan, but.
Gentlemen, I have to use the restroom so bad.
Same, same.
I am dying over here.
I said, do you see mine?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you see mine? So, no, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good one. So we'll wrap up here. So I've got upcoming events. Post office continues to be open for business during normal hours. Civic Center offices are open to the public for zoning permits and general information and the parks remain open. So at this time, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session. I do want to invite Ms. Cohen to, to join us. Anyone out here, I think will take a few minutes to be able to hit the restroom so you can all say hi or you can take a few minutes to say hi. But we will commence with executive session. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion entering into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22-Golf for item one, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to section 121.22-Golf 2 of the Ohio Revised Code. And item two, to consider the confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance provided that both of the following conditions apply. A, the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under any provision of the chapter 7157251724 or 1728 or section 701.073735.67 to 3735.705709.40 to 5709.435709.61 to 5709.695709.73 to 5709.75 or 5709.77 to 5709.81 of the Ohio Revised Code or that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to the economic development project. And B, a unanimous quorum of the public body determines by a roll call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in the connection with the economic development project pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22-Golf 8 of the Ohio Revised Code. Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
So moved.
Will you repeat all that?
Yeah.
Second.
And with no discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're into executive session at 9:15 PM.
All right. Shock. Like.[1163.01]
On the heat or the crucifix will you?
That's pretty funny.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to exit executive session that was pursuant to higher vice code 121.22 golf for items one and two. And this is at 10:42 PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
With, with, huh, the motion, let me amend the motion, with no action taken at 9:42, or 10:42 PM, too. So let me clarify. Entertain a motion to exit executive session pursuant to higher vice code 121.22 golf for items one and two with no actions taken at 10:42 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
We're out of executive session.
Yes.
At 10:42.
And gentlemen, at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at, we're adjourned, 10:43.
We are adjourned.
At 10:43. Sorry, long night.
Long night, lot going.
Lots on.